I will ask.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Beely. I'm the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And tonight, we're going to be starting off with a joint special meeting between Planning and Zoning and Economic Development. However, as we're waiting for, I think, one more member from Economic Development to attend, as we need a quorum from that commission as well. So I'm going to ask for your patience as we wait for their arrival. Thank you. Hooray. Our missing member has arrived. Okay, for those folks online, we'll ask at this time that you make sure that you are muted as we are getting feedback here. Thank you. All right. With that being said and done, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And at 6:10 in the evening, I'll ask everyone to six, seven, seven, 7:10, excuse me, sorry. I'm on that daylight savings time or something. All right, I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone. And Maureen, do you want to do a roll call for this meeting?
Sure, well, I'll start with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Joan Bailey.
Present.
Andrew Lou Miller, it asked to be excused. Diane Dorsey.
Here.
Mimi Zigmar. Brian Rogan.
Here.
Joan, Chairman Beely. Scott Hamel. Michael Pachek. John Diken. Steve Vialla Jr. And then the EDC members, Keith Bastrum. Now, Peter Campanelli. Chris Coppola. Dave Seer. Ed Egazarian. Vincent Fortunato. And Bob Sisti. So there's a full quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission members if you cede an alternate. And there is a quorum of four Economic Development Commission members, so the meeting can proceed.
Okay, and so for Planning and Zoning for an alternate, let me see. I'm going to ask, you're signaling you don't want to, okay. I'm either gonna take John or Michael. Which one? Well, let me see, Michael's on vacation and you're just, you're still here. Okay, so let's go with John. Next, go around, Michael. Okay, thank you. All right, so the item on the agenda is the Berlin Turnpike and Core Area Two zoning discussion. There's a presentation from FHI Studio on the potential zoning amendments to consider for commercial zoning districts along the Berlin Turnpike and at Core Area Two of the Kensington Village. So Francisco from FHI, I am going to ask that you take over the presentation from here. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. I will now share my screen. I do have a presentation that will help guide us through the content that we'll cover this evening. And it's good to see all of you. You're about the size of an ant on my screen right now, but it's very good to share the virtual room with all of you. So as Joan had introduced, we're here this evening to talk about your commercial zoning. And with really a focus on zones along the Berlin Turnpike, and to the extent that we have time this evening to talk about Core Area Two, we'd like to discuss that as well. So let me jump right into things. I've been working, FHI Studio's been working in the town for about three years now. We had started our work on the POCD, followed that up around the same time, actually, with an Affordable Housing Plan. And we have since been working with the town on, following through on some of the recommendations of both the POCD and the Affordable Housing Plan with respect to zoning modifications that were recommended by both plans. And so that's work that we've been actively engaged in over the past year. With, you know, with some time in between a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission and with Jim, Maureen, and Chris as well. The purpose of our efforts, as I mentioned, it, this really comes out of recommendations of both those plans. But the, the purpose is to update the commercial zoning along the Berlin Turnpike to better support development and redevelopment of parcels, particularly those that have long been undeveloped or vacant under the current zoning regulations. And with respect to Kensington Village Core Area Two, to ensure the regulations do not act as a barrier to the development that's been envisioned for the village, the transit-oriented development that's been envisioned. With that being said, I'll walk you through this step by step. And first, we'll start with, excuse me, a discussion of the Berlin Turnpike. And if anyone has any questions at any point, I'll try to pause occasionally. Please do speak up, and I am happy to field any questions or comments as we go along. And if you'd like, you could hold it to the end, too. My presentation, if I were just go through it straight, I could probably get done in 20 minutes, half an hour at most, to give you an idea. So, as I mentioned, a focus of our efforts has been on the Berlin Turnpike. It is a, it is a puzzle of different zoning districts up and down the turnpike, mostly commercial. And that ranges from the PSB, which is Plan Shopping B. Two different Berlin Turnpike zones, they're actually very similar, but allow for different intensities of uses. And then the SPDD, which applies to the hilltop area at the intersection of Turnpike and Route Nine, along with some overlays related to that, that district in areas adjacent to that across the Berlin Turnpike and into the south of that area. I'll walk you through these, kind of explain what they're intended to do, what some of the challenges are with respect to the existing zoning, and what some of our ideas are with respect to how to amend the zoning to better support the type of development applications or the interests that Chris often sees when people come in his office or reach out to him. So the purpose of these zones is important that we understand why the Berlin Turnpike Commercial Zones is carved up into several different types of zoning districts. They each have a different function. The Plan Shopping B is intended to accommodate really large, larger shopping developments, basically. Development, planning, commercial facilities intended to serve a local and regional market. Whereas the Berlin Turnpike One and Two zones are really intended or designed for smaller-scale developments, more individual type properties and developments for which you have many examples of up and down the Berlin Turnpike, whether it be an auto service facility, or a single retailer, or a couple of shops located in a building. Those do range in the intensity of uses, as I mentioned before, but other than that, they're very similar type zones. And then we have your special design districts. The SPDD covers the hilltop area, which does include some active land uses, but is mostly undeveloped and for reasons which I'll walk you through. The purpose of that district of that zoning is to, it was intended to accommodate a unified, well-planned, mixed-use development, large-scale development. It is a big property. And intended to accommodate high intensity of use and leverage its location at the intersection of Berlin Turnpike and Route Nine. The overlay districts, their purpose is related to the SPDD. And just so everyone's clear, when I talk about an overlay district, we're talking about a set of regulations that either are more restrictive or are more prohibitive or more permissive of development within that overlay. So the overlay extends over other zoning districts that allow whatever uses were in place at the time. So when, if you're within an overlay district such as the SPDD two or SPDD overlay, it basically means that there are other things you could do with your property other than what is allowed by the base zoning district. And that is really intended, was intended to benefit the SPDD area in case there really was a massive development. You could have complementary development in the surrounding areas while still allowing all the underlying uses to continue to occur by the underlying zoning district. And I hope I did a good job of explaining that. It can be a little difficult to get your head wrapped around sometimes. So let me walk you through these one by one, tell you a little bit more about the characteristics of each of these districts, and then I'll get to the types of changes that we think should be considered. So the PSB is the Plan Shopping B. There are eight basic categories of uses allowed in the PSB. It's a fairly restrictive zone. It doesn't allow for that many uses. It's really intended for retail and larger-scale retail as well. All uses are allowed by special permit. Special permit is the highest standard you have of a permit. It requires a public hearing. It requires a lot of documentation, typically requires a site plan. It's a lengthy and expensive process for an applicant as compared to a site plan application that does not require a public hearing and is a little less onerous. And then in a zoning permit, which there are very few things that you have that are permitted commercially that are allowed just by zoning permit, which would be the, basically the CEO signing off without anything going to the commission. So mostly, we're talking about site plan and special permit uses in these districts. And many, many of the uses that are allowed are allowed only by special permit. In the case of the PSB, all the uses that are allowed are special permit only. The BT1, it allows 11 different categories of use by site plan. And site plan still has to go to the commission, but does not require a public hearing. And so it's, it's kind of a lesser standard, a less burdensome process for an applicant. Twenty-seven of the uses, so more than twice as many of the uses allowed by site plan, require a special permit. So wide range of uses allowed, but many of them are required by special permit. The BT2 is more restrictive. It's much more restrictive than the BT1. It allows less intense uses, less heavy, commercial, almost light industrial-type uses, some of which are allowed in the BT1. Six uses are allowed by site plan, 13 by special permit. And these districts are scattered in pockets up and down the Berlin Turnpike. You can see in the image on the left, the BT2, it's surrounded by, it's got butts against residential behind it. OT2 on the other side of the street. The BT1 is also in, surrounded by other uses as well. And the way these zoning districts often evolve in terms of their boundaries is they typically, when zoning was first established, whenever that was in Berlin, you know, we're probably at least 60, 70 years ago now. Those districts were drawn around existing land uses, and so that's how they are first established. So these districts can be scattershot. That being said, we're not compelled to stay by the boundaries that are currently drawn. Zoning Commission has the authority to redraw these lines. Now, the SPDD, you know, this is, this is the big vision. This is the big idea of this parcel. It's a huge area comprised of multiple parcels, some of which, as I mentioned, have active land uses, most of which is vacant for reasons I'll explain shortly. It is very restrictive with respect to the types of uses that are allowed. Only seven use groups or categories of uses are allowed. And all uses require a special permit. No uses are currently allowed by site plan. And as I mentioned, it, it borders the SPDD overlay, which is this grid-like hashed area. And some of those parcels are residential, at least that overlay overlays the R43 residential district. So that's on the southern edge of the property. And then across the Berlin Turnpike, and I hear maybe a question, so I'll pause in a minute. Across the Berlin Turnpike, overlying the BT2 is the SPDD two overlay. Once again, these overlays allow for uses that are not allowed in the underlying districts, whether it's the R43 or the BT2. And the idea was if this development were really to take off and expand in size, it could jump across the street. It could incorporate parcels off of Middletown Road as well. Right, and I did hear something. I'm not sure if there was a question or a comment.
I think it was feedback on.
Okay.
On somebody.
Gave me a chance to have drink of water. I will proceed. So I talked about the SPD overlay. All uses that are allowed within that overlay are subject to a site plan and special permit approval. And so it's fairly, it's, even though there are additional uses allowed within those overlay districts, we have not seen those overlay districts be leveraged for much if any development. So that, that, that part of your zoning regulation has not been terribly effective. And for that matter, we've, we've seen very little activity as, as was envisioned by the purpose of the SPD zone. Little, no activity in this hilltop area. All right, so I think I've sufficiently explained the SPDD overlays. You do have, as I mentioned, yes, these are two different maps. This is your PDF version of your map and your online viewer, which same lines are drawn a little differently. But there are a lot of properties within the SPDD, too. Many of them are currently in use. Many of them are small properties, and a lot of them abut the R15 district, which, right, which is, has a number of homes right behind them. And so, you know, we, we have to be very careful about the type of development that occurs here because it does abut Worthington Ridge and properties on Worthington Ridge. So what, what we did is we assembled a table to organize all the permitted uses, and I'm not going to go through this in detail. Your zoning regulations don't have a table like this. So we went through all the line-by-line of text. Most of your allowed uses are just listed in a numbered list in the text. And we organized in a table just to get an idea of, you know, what type of uses were allowed, where, and by what permit type. An SPA means site plan applications, SP means special permit. And what you see, as I described before, is the PSB is very restrictive. So you have these full list of uses, very, very few of which are actually allowed in the PSB. The ones that are allowed are allowed by special permit. And the same is true of the SPDD. And there's a lot of commonalities between the two and the uses they allow. As I mentioned, the overlay districts, they, you know, they provide some flexibility, but they really have not been effectively used to, to support development. And so the list goes on. And, you know, we're, we're gonna, I believe Maureen's already made this presentation available to you. So you have this list in front of you, and you can take your time to read through it.
Just for clarity, this is Maureen speaking for one second. On some of the maps used, you have done a few zoning amendment, zone map amendments in like the SPDD area. The two, SPDD two area, that, these are older prints of the map that were uploaded into the PowerPoint. So keep that in mind. You know, there's just a couple of little things that have been amended. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the Economic Development Commission all got a print of this. And it was emailed to Planning and Zoning Commission. I think it was emailed to EDC as well, but if not, we'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you, Maureen. And this, in your print, this, you'll probably need a magnifying glass to read this table. But if you have a digital copy of it, you'll be able to zoom in. All right, so in summary, and this'll, I think this'll be a little easier to read than the chart I just went through. Permitted uses, and these, this, these would be used permitted by zoning permit that are signed off on administratively. That's only allowed in the SPDD overlay. That's it. And that's, that's mostly because that overlay is a residential area. So there are six uses. A lot of site plan uses, but not that many when compared to special permit uses. And so when we total all the different types of uses allowed, what we see is the BT1 is the most permissive, allowing 38 different types of uses. We're talking about retail, service, sales establishments, wide range of commercial uses, including some mixed uses depending on the district you're in. And what we see is the SPD, only seven types of uses are allowed. It's very restrictive. And then when we take a look at the bulk area and height standards, and to try to make this easier, we color-coded it. So green means most permissive, means lower standard, a little easier to meet. Your peaks there are more, you know, this is kind of like a traffic light situation here, where the green is go. The yellow is, you know, caution here, or moderately restrictive. The pink and red are very restrictive. And, and what we see is, you know, it's really scattered with the SPDD is very restrictive, a lot of reds there, some greens as compared to the BT1, BT2, where you see a lot more green. So when we, we talk about more restrictive, we mean you have to have a, a bigger front yard, larger side yards, so these are your setbacks. Setbacks have to be substantial. Bigger setbacks for parking, loading, for the building itself. Building height, limits on building height, the SPDD is actually very permissive in that area. It requires, it allows up to five stories or 75 feet. Front yard and parking setbacks, building coverage. Maximum building coverage, that's how much lot the, a building could cover. In the SPDD, it's only 25%, it's only quarters lot. Maximum building impervious surface coverage, so that's building and parking lots and anything else that doesn't drain. Minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and maximum floor area ratio, FAR. And that, that basically means how much, if you were to build a one-story building, how much of the area of the site could you cover? And 1.0 means you could cover the entire site with a one-story building, which of course is not going to happen. But it limits how big the building could be in that if you went to a four-story building, you could only cover 25% of the site. That's how FAR works. The one point, FAR 1.0, it's pretty good, but we certainly see much higher, 2.0 or more in some places. So we've, we've honed in on a few of these things, a few of these metrics or standards that we think need attention. I'll walk you through those one by one. Let's first talk about the Hilltop site. Most of the area and the greatest number of parcels have one owner. And so this map, this view, this plan view is color-coded by ownership. Same colors means same owner. And so what we see are several parcels have common ownership. And I should note, these, as you would expect, these ownerships are LLCs and, and holding companies, that sort of thing. So, you know, it may be that actually there are even fewer owners, depending who has interest in what company. The, we've got three parcels that aren't very big, but they've got great frontage in the blue. We've got a purple parcel as a single owner. That's pretty significant in the fact that it really cuts deep into the site. And then we have a handful of other owners, including Berlin Land Trust holds a property in the corner for conservation. So we, when we see a lot of common ownership, that's generally a good thing because you have one owner that, that can negotiate development. They have a lot of land to work with. Now, I think if there's anything that you'll notice about the ownership for most of this site that's shown in green is they don't have any direct access off to Berlin Turnpike. Their only access is off Middletown Road, which is, for the most part, a residential road. And when we take a look at the site itself, this, this is a radar, lidar of the site that shows the topography. So if you could imagine just stripping off all the tree cover and buildings and shrubs and ground cover, and you just got down to the bare soil. This is what you would see if the light were coming from the west. And I, what I want to impress upon you is the fact is that ridge that is clearly visible right down the center of this property going northeast. And that is a lot of trap rock in there. That is a, there's, there's not a, there's not glacial till. It is, is rock. It is trap rock. And that really divides the site in half to the east. What you'll notice, things look very, fairly smooth and flat. And that is because much of that area is water. It's wetlands, marsh. It's forested, but it has a high water table, and it's all pretty flat and, and in floodplain. And I'll show you those maps in the middle. So when we talk about Hilltop, we're, we're almost talking about three sites. We have the west side of this ridge with properties that have access to the Berlin Turnpike in the lower corner, of which we have developed properties already. The ridge itself, and the ridge does have a plateau at the top. All right, there's, it's got a steep side to the right where you see the shadow, to the left where you see the brightness, very steep ridge. And that top, there is a bit of a plateau. And you may or may, I'm not sure how good your screen is there, but you may or may not be able to see an old farm road that works its way from Middletown Road up to the top of this ridge. And so that, that is climbable, but it's challenging topography. So if you weren't familiar with this site and were wondering what, why had this been developed, these, these are some challenges. Yeah, is there a comment or question?
You're gonna have to, can you get up to the microphone? He won't be able to hear you.
Ed Egazarian, Economic Development Commission. A quick question. That access from Hilltop to Middletown Road, is that dry enough to have an emergency exit and entrance?
Yeah, most likely. It's, it, it's from a residential property. There's, there's a house there. And, you know, I don't know what the original purpose of that road is. It's probably just a double-track type of road that you would need a, you know, all-wheel vehicle to climb. I haven't personally been out to the site to see it in person, but this is what we're seeing. If we were to take a look at it in aerial, taken in the winter, a high-quality, high-resolution aerial photograph, you can see the traces of it as well.
Okay, my main question, I guess, then, too, is that is owned by the Hilltop Group? That's part of that parcel?
So, yeah, it extends into, if I go back, you'll, you'll notice it covers three parcels. It starts with a residential property off the Middletown Road, extends into the parcel directly above that, that wraps around, and then into a third parcel here. So if I, if I go back to our ownership map, you'll see it starts down here. This one right here, right here, you can see a house there, extends into this one and this one. So the, the upper part of that, and I, you know, I hesitate calling a road because it's not paved, right? It's double-track. So the, the upper part of that, you know, I, you know, I hesitate calling a road because it's not paved, right? It's double track. Um, old, old, may, maybe like logging road could have been. Um, it does extend into uh, this ownership group's property.
Okay, thank you.
And and you're, you're kind of getting ahead a little bit, but that's okay in terms of as we start thinking about this site and where access could be provided. So that was a very good question to ask about that. Alright, as I mentioned, uh, the slopes along the ridge average between twelve percent to forty percent. Uh, so from steep to ex, to almost a wall to very steep. And so if we take a look at how those slopes look, as I mentioned, the eastern part of our site. Both a hundred year flood zone and wetlands. There was some recent development in the very corner where it's high and dry, someone built a house. Rest of it's slope, twenty six percent slope on the eastern slope at its steepest part. A twelve percent slope approaching, and to give you an idea, twelve percent. Uh, twelve percent is what you're climbing, when you're climbing the steep side of Avon Mountain from uh. Avon into West Hartford, right? That, that's about as steep as a road gets. Um, the climbs on Route nine over this area are, are far less than that. A twenty six percent slope, forty percent slope, you know, these are slopes you're not. You know, if you're trying to walk up them, you're using your hands. So we're, we've got a lot of slope out there. But at the top, it is twelve percent, twelve percent sites are buildable. And there's about fifteen acres located within that twelve percent slope area sandwiched between these two slopes. And to get to that, it is really a kind of along that farm road. It doesn't have to be follow it the entire way. Uh, but it could be off Middletown Road, you, you could, you know, it would require a lot of grading, some work. Other, there's a vacant property here, uh, residential property next to it. And it, it's feasible to get a road there. Now, you know, is it feasibility and desirability are two different things. I don't want to confuse the two. Now, the western part of this site is challenged, believe it or not, there are wetlands over here too. Uh, and they're, they, because they sit at the base of the slope, that water gets stuck through here. Uh, so these are wetlands that, the developer wouldn't want to go out there and delineate these to confirm these boundaries. But the best mapping we have, we believe these are the extents of the wetlands. That leaves about thirty acres, roughly thirty acres, including some of these parcels down here that are. Uh, dry and really with only a three percent average slope. Um, steeper in some areas, but on average, three percent, which is for the most part, flat, close to flat. So this area, you know, it does appear to be fairly developable. It, and it, it could uh, be provided access off the Berlin Turnpike. Now, you know, whether or not you'd be able to. Turn left out of there, that, you know, that's obviously something that would need to be negotiated with the DOT to get a traffic light in there to allow left turns. But you could have a right in and right out out of that site. Uh, so when we look at this site, we're, we're really talking about three different areas. This, which is, is just off the table, right? Nothing can happen here. Uh, this sloped area, this plateau, which, you know, maybe something could happen. The access directly off the Berlin Turnpike, as in like a, a development that spans over this ridge. You know, that would be a really costly project, um, a lot of work involved, which isn't to say it's not possible. The other way to approach this is that you're really, you're talking about potentially two different development sites. The western part access off the Berlin Turnpike. And there's fifteen acres with access provided for Middletown Road. Now, when we think about those thirty acres and, you know, what can you fit on thirty acres? Uh, I, I just provided a couple of examples just for conversation. Evergreen Walk in South Windsor, you know, it, it's a really large development. There are a few different components of it, but this is the, the heart of it that I. We cropped a screenshot of, of an aerial photo and dropped it in at scale. And you could, you know, you'd have to rearrange this parking, um, but. You know, good part of Evergreen Walk, you could accommodate on that thirty acre site. Uh, Centurion Plaza in South Windsor is a little smaller, it has a range of uses, hotel, uh. Uh, some fast food, I, I, maybe even some, a medical office, I think, might be some little bit of residential, I'm not sure. That easily fits on the site and could accommodate more. So even though the Hilltop area is divided up into these multiple areas and there are a lot of constraints environmentally. There's still a lot of developable land. Now, uh. Given that, we, we have today, haven't seen any development. Or not as envisioned. There, there's been interests, but uh, nothing in line with the purpose of the district as stated. Uh, so based upon discussion with Jim, Maureen, Chris. Uh, we came up a few ideas we're interested in running by you. Uh, certainly, we've had quite a bit of debate. We spent uh, many hours in, in calls discussing these ideas. Uh, first, would be to lower the permit requirement. Uh, for many of the uses or for specific uses from a special permit to a site plan. Which we, we think would be more attractive to some, some developers. Uh, allow additional uses, as I mentioned, there are very few uses that are actually allowed in this district. So to allow additional uses. To reduce the lot size requirements, some other standards. Um, it's very restrictive right now. You, you have to have very big. You have to piece together uh, a pretty good sized lot to do anything. And then finally, to eliminate the overlays, uh, because they're, they simply have not been effective. The SPD D overlay on the southern edge of the site over the R forty three, you know, much of that is. Unbuildable for anything other than existing residential properties that are there because wetlands are flooding. And um, really, it's just taking up pages in your regulations. And it, it's um, adds complexity to your regulations. It's not been effective, you know, we think it's just time to let it, get rid of those, let them go. So let me walk you through some of these other changes that I discussed. So lower the permit requirements. So what, what are we talking about when we say this? Uh, so first of all, retail uses, um. The, the following uses are currently require a special permit. We're recommending that we only require a site plan approval, which would mean no public hearing. And, and some other, some other um. Documents and procedural things would, would not be required. Uh, so to allow retail uses, including shopping malls, um. With certain conditions between certain sizes, fifty to thousand to half million square feet. Um, by site plan, general business, medical and professional offices, hotels with over a hundred rooms. Restaurants excluding drive-throughs, banks, financial services, indoor commercial recreational facilities. The, those are all currently allowed by special permit. So the idea is just reduce that to a site plan approval. Next is to allow additional uses. Um, and all of these uses are uses allowed in some district right now in Berlin, many of them in the BT one or BT two. Um, and allow these by special permit because we are introducing a lot of potentially new uses. Let's keep the standard high, so you maintain higher measure control over it. And that would range from adult and child daycare and assisted living facilities. You know, all the way to nursery garden supply store, sales and service for boats. A wide range of uses that are currently allowed up and down other parts of the Berlin Turnpike. Alright, our next idea is to reduce the lot requirements in the SPD D. Right now, you have to have ten acres to do a development in this area. And I think you can make out the lot sizes, the parcel sizes that are out there right now, and they range from. One and the big one sixty two. Um, but a lot of those sixty two acres aren't developable because of wetlands or floodplain or slope. Um, so by reducing from ten to one, or ten to five, excuse me. It, it allows for, by example, uh, the owner of the five acres. Uh, that extend deep into the sixty two acre site to. Work with the owner of the one acre sites to do a development, and that's a seven acre property. And then you could have development with lots of frontage and seven acres. Uh, right now, with a ten acre requirement. Even if all four of those sites that front Berlin Turnpike combined, you'd only have nine point one acres and you, you can't do a project. Next would be to reduce the lot width requirement from the four hundred feet. Um, that's currently required to two hundred feet. And that would allow for narrower lots to be developed. Four hundred feet's a lot, you know, it's uh, longer than a professional soccer field. And finally, to uh, potentially, and you know, this is. All of this is up for discussion, but the first two, we, we had more confidence in. Um, the, the next two, increasing the density by increasing the FAR, which is currently one point O. Or the building height up to, say, a hundred feet. Uh, it's currently seventy five, uh, would be um, another idea to consider. And you know, I think I talked this through sufficiently. Um, and this, this would be a pretty simple change, and we don't think there would really be any opportunities lost by eliminating those overlays. Alright, and now would probably be a good time for me to stop before I move on to our BT one and two recommendations. You know, happy to receive any questions or comments.
Mission, any questions, comments? Economic Development. Yes, Mr. Agazarian.
The reason I, I asked a question before about that. Parcel that connected with Middletown Road. I guess the goal we would like to accomplish here is to keep any traffic that occurs. That would go onto the Berlin Turnpike and not Middletown Road. That's why I kind of referred this to as a um, an emergency exit. You know, fire, radis and so forth. So there is a band of wetlands in there. Uh, that divides the uh, back fifteen acres to the front section. That borders the Berlin Turnpike. Can that be bridged so you could connect that as one uh, entrance? Would that be?
Yeah, it, it could, it could. I mean, that all comes at tremendous costs, right? So here, we're just talking about money, you know, in terms of environmentally, are you allowed to do that? Yes, is there a tremendous amount of permitting, of course. Um, there's, even if you had to fill some wetlands, there's enough room on the site to do uh, compensatory wetlands to do mitigation. Um, so that, that's absolutely possible, um. As I mentioned before, we need to think about this as two different sites and. That site that's high on the plateau, that's potentially accessible from Middletown Road. Uh, it, it wouldn't necessarily have to be commercial development, or it could be exclusively residential. And so now we're, maybe we're just talking about residential traffic. And of course, you know, if, if you have enough units and high enough density, even that traffic could be a bit of a nuisance. But it'd be very different than. A shopping center and a hotel and medical office, you know. A hundred units of residential or whatever it may be would have a very different uh, characteristic than. Uh, intense, heavy commercial.
Yeah, okay. I don't think was uh, real intentions of having single family homes there.
Yeah, you know, that's, correct, that's, that's not the intention of the zone. And um, that's certainly not what I intend to describe, although. You know, that, I, that probably could be up for discussion as to what the best use of that property is. It could, could be a townhouse or multifamily or.
Or senior housing.
Senior housing for that matter, absolutely. Yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Seer.
Dave Seer from Economic Development. Uh, sir, if you could just go back to the prior screen, which was number three. Where you talk about reducing ten acres to five acres, and I'm, I'm looking at the diagram there. And. What I'm concerned about is the five acre parcel. Develops, or he picks up, or she picks up the two acres next to them and do a development. Taking the frontage on a turnpike will limit possibly the sixty two acre potential for development going forward. So I just want to, you know, while we give. The folks on the, that have frontage. Uh, from ten acres to five acres, which will increase the likelihood possibly or allow a development. It may limit what happens with the sixty two acres because they lose that potential frontage. So that's the only point I want to make.
Well, you would be absolutely correct by pointing that out.
Thank you.
It, it wouldn't, uh, let's for the sake of argument, say that the four properties. Starting with the one acre down to the two point one were to develop into one development. Um, you know, it's. Essentially, and let me go back to the ownership map. Essentially. That would essentially block this site. Well, this, first of all, this site doesn't have any frontage on the Berlin Turnpike right now, or this ownership, this property ownership. It, as it is, this property ownership. And this is, this is assuming there aren't any common owners between these different ownership groups. Uh, as it is, they don't have access, right? Um, so there's. You'd be correct in pointing out, there's, there's really nothing physically prohibiting that access, and there's no buildings or parking lots in the way. But as it is, there's, there's no access to the site, or the site doesn't have any frontage already. Uh, now, if these four were to assemble into some sort of development. It, it's, it's really hard to imagine development, an effective development occurring. Un, unless this owner is part of the mix and, and this site gets brought in in some capacity. I think what we're responding to is that we've, we've really spent a decade plus, we haven't seen any movement here. And so we need to change some, you know, change some of the. The landscape a little bit to incentivize things to start moving. It, it's really at a, a kind of a stalemate. And maybe by opening things up for some of these owners, it'll, it'll get, get all the rest of this moving, get, get some. Uh, some negotiation taking place. You know, we, we can only speculate about that. But I, I do want to remind everyone that. Most of this, the majority of this site and, and of this ownership group. Currently does not have frontage on the Berlin Turbike. They already don't have direct access. Yeah, any other questions or comments?
No other questions or comments. I think everyone's just overwhelmed.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot to take in, but um. The reason we're here is because you've had zoning in place for a long time now for this property, and we've been through. Some pretty remarkable periods of market opportunities and development in every other place but this property. And so we're, we're trying to respond to that.
If I may, and just kind of a reminder that, um, you know, we decided to schedule this meeting. As a discussion and presentation and information. So that the commission, the commissions could um. Then have the time to absorb the presentation and the materials before you decide whether or not you're going to proceed with. Scheduling any giving direction and or scheduling hearings on any amendments. So that's really, this is in order to kind of leave that open for the. Questions after being confused.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead, Francisco, what else?
Okay, alright, and thank, thank you for the questions that, that you have forwarded. They've, they've been helpful to the discussion. Alright, so let's talk about the BT two. You know, that, the, the Hilltop site, the SPD D i- is really. It, it's a significant component of the work that I think needs to be done in that. Really has occupied our time in discussions. All the rest of this is very important. Uh, but that I think is, is one of the most important issues. So on the, uh, with respect to BT two, um, we have recommendations in the BT one for that matter. Uh, our recommendations are to modify the allowed uses in the BT one and the same for the BT two. So allow the use, uh, change the. The use, uh, change the uses allowed by primarily by adding uses, removing some uses. And changing the permit requirement, and not unlike what I described for the SBDD. And then also to modify some of the lot standards, although very surgical approach to that for, for both those districts. Alright, so let's first talk about the BT one. Uh, we recommend allowing some new special permit uses, including. Veterinary clinics, excluding kennels. And clean contractors, and what we mean by that are, you know, plumbing contractors, electrical contractors, anything that doesn't have a. A big messy yard with lots of equipment and debris. Uh, and then to remove some existing special permit uses uh that are allowed in a lot of other places. Motor vehicle repair. Animal hospitals. And that's a little different from veterinary clinic. In terms of its size and intensity. Lumberyards and Nella. Mossinary, geez, I hope I said that right, religious and religious uses. Uh, which are allowed in a lot of other districts. Um, so we're not sure the Berlin Turnpike is a commercial zone. For commerce is, is the best place for religious institutions. Next, um, would be also to modify the allowed uses in the BT two. And uh, so to add new site plan uses. To allow stores and shops for personal and business services, caterers and bakeries, medical offices, medical and dental laboratories. None of those are currently allowed in the BT two. As a reminder, the BT two's fairly restrictive, the BT one is more permissive. To reduce the special permit requirement for many of the uses to a site plan requirement, that ranges from an adult daycare center all the way to. Hotels, radio and TV broadcasts, public schools, libraries, post offices. And then to add uh new special permit uses. Printing and publishing services, manufacturers, showrooms, not, not manufacturing, but showrooms. Indoor and outdoor, commercial recreation, private transportation, auto rental services, nursery and garden supply. Enclosed amusement facilities, boat vehicles, equipment sales and service. Public utility buildings, car washes. You know, I'm going to come back to that in a minute, uh, for-profit vocational schools and liquor sales. Uh, car washes, your car washes regardless of the district they are in and of the lot size requirement of the district. They're currently required two acre, a two acre minimum for a car wash. And uh, as I understand it, uh, Chris has had uh interest or his head parties. Express interest to him in the car wash, but on sites that are less than two acres, an acre or more. And they are currently prohibited by the way your regulations are written in that. Wherever you have a car wash, you have to have two acres regardless of if the underlying zoning district is a one acre minimum. Uh, so that is something to consider. Next would be to reduce the permit, uh, reduce the permit requirement. Uh, in that, and so this would be a wholesale permit requirement reduction. So in addition, if I go back, in addition to these different uses that are allowed by different. Uh, permit types, whether it be a site plan or a special permit. You also have a size threshold that kicks up any use to a special permit. So currently in the BT one and BT two, if you have a use greater than five thousand square feet, which commercially speaking. Is not big, right? That's a very big house in that, uh, you can't find a CVS that small, right? So we're not talking about a big use. If you have a use bigger than five thousand square feet, it requires a special permit. Um, so. That, it was really catching. Most of your applicants that are otherwise would be allowed by site plan. Just by being fifty-one hundred square feet, they have to pull a special permit. Uh, so our recommendation is change the threshold of that to ten thousand square feet. And so you're still catching something like a CVS, which tends to be twelve or thirteen thousand square feet. Um, but uh, you know, for your smaller developments, they would uh be approved by site plan. Next would be to modify some of these other standards. And I'll take it from the top of the table. Minimum front yard is fifty feet. That's the setback from the front property line. Now, as it is on the Berlin Turnpike, the state has a very ri- wide right of way, and the right of way is that space. State-controlled space between property lines on the other side of the street. So properties are already fairly set back by the right of way itself. In addition to that, there's a fifty-foot setback requirement from their front property line, and in some cases, the edge of the right of way is thirty feet back. From the edge of the roadway. So you could, if you build right to the front of where you're allowed, you could still be eighty feet back from the Berlin Turnpike in many locations. So we recommend uh reducing that from fifty to thirty in both districts, and I don't think to any detriment at all. Uh, along the Berlin Turnpike, that, that would help, certainly help for those interested in. Having their building closer to the road, more visible, and putting parking to the side and to the rear, that I think many of us would prefer to. That the parking be hidden in the back or tucked onto the side instead of right in front of, and it's all establishments. That would further enable a parking configurations of that nature. Our, our next change is um really just cleaning up what may have initially been an error we've. The building height standard for the BT two is thirty-five feet, and for some reason, four-story buildings are allowed, and I'm, I'm not sure how you. Build a four-story building in thirty-five feet, so that, that should really be three, so we need to clean that up. But more importantly is discussion about minimum lot size. Currently, the minimum lot size is two acres in both zones. And I would say, and I, we haven't done a rough, uh, and we haven't done a calculation, exact calculation on this, but just from. Having looked at the parcel maps, I would say only about half of the properties. Are actually over, or two acres or more. Most are, are, at least half are probably less than two acres, and some of them less than one acre for that matter. Uh, so that's obviously a barrier development when you have multiple properties up and down the turnpike that are. Really for any sort of redevelopment, new development are, are dependent upon. Uh, acquiring a property next to them to do a development. Now, well, let me condition all this by saying. The regulations have a, a kind of an asterisk around this, actually a footnote in, in the regulations that says that the commission. Will consider. Reducing or wa- reducing the lot size standard to a lesser lot size. Uh, you know, based upon uh individual applications. Uh, the trouble with that is it, it's not necessarily guaranteed, so you get pretty far into a project with lawyers and engineers. And money spent on drawings and surveyors, uh, only to go before the commission, and maybe they don't, maybe they don't like your project, and it goes nowhere. Because you have one point nine five acres and not two. The, and the last part of this i- is just to, once again, just try to ease things. Uh, by reducing the minimum lot width from a hundred and seventy-five feet to a hundred and fifty feet, because there are a lot of parcels that are right on that threshold. That are at one fifty-five, one seventy. Um, and get it down to one fifty to bring more uh parcels into conformity. Chris, I saw you join, yeah, and I thought, I think, did you want to uh provide any comment on this? Chris, no? Okay, I just saw you pop up on my screen. I wasn't sure if you wanted to weigh in. Alright, thank you. Okay, uh. Let me, let me once again pause here and open up any questions or comments. Uh, with respect to the BT one and BT two and, and the ideas that we have for amendments to those regulations. No. No, he's ready.
Uh, thank you. Um, and no, I just wanted to mention the fact that the, the, the two acre minimum, I think scares people. The commission has the ability to say, yes, you can do it on less than two acres, but I think a lot of users, agents, engineers, don't put the time in. Because the two acres scares them. Um, I, I don't have a map in front of me, but I want to say there was a ton between one and one point seven five acres. And a number of them were uh those wonderful hotels that we would love to see something else happen at. So I, I think this would bring more opportunity for development. And especially too, sometimes the amount of money people want for lots, just picking up another piece or another parcel. Makes it, makes it not feasible. Um, I know there's a couple parcels that are north of Acura that. Again, they're asking a lot of money, but if you have to make them two acres, they can't make it work. So it's something that makes a lot of sense, and. Again, the idea is to get more interest and make things happen, particularly with redevelopment, which I think all of us agree. There are properties that we would love to see something else. Um, so again, I, I just appreciate that, and I appreciate Francisco's work on this because it's been nice to be able to. Look at this and have somebody on the outside look at it and help us, help guide us. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I, I'd have your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we do have um a map of, of the parcels along the Berlin Turnpike by parcel size. That we can, we'll send out to both commissions after this meeting, so you can reflect on that.
And if, if I could provide some context here. You know, thi- this may seem fairly obvious, right? You have all these pro- properties that are undersized, it, it discourages. Applicants or developers, so what, you know, why in the world did we ever have two acres then with all these small lots? The intention of having a larger lot size requirement is to encourage. Larger scale developments, so you don't end up with little tiny piecemeal development up and down the turnpike. And that, that was the original intention. Was to encourage these parcels being combined and being small uses being replaced with more significant developments. Alright, any other comments or questions on the BT one, BT two recommendations?
Anyone, commission? Economic development? Okay, Ed Agusarian.
Ed Agusarian, EDC. Um, I, I personally own property on the turnpike, and it's an acre and a quarter with a frontage of two hundred and fifty feet. The setting. That originally was for that site. Uh, with the setbacks. If you notice, my sign is probably sixty feet from the road. Which this gentleman, the consultant, is bringing up that you really don't have a chance to see a sign that's that far back. When you're going fifty to sixty miles an hour. A lot of my um neighbors have got permission to put signs. On the state right of way, which makes a lot of sense, as long as it doesn't affect the site, uh, the site, sightline. Um. So to review that, to allow the parking to be closer to the property line, uh, does make sense. Um, under this um BT one, BT two zone, we probably should allow. Um, similar language that is like in the uh CCD zone. Um. Studios of dance, photography, and other similar artistic endeavors. Um, we. It probably just makes sense to have something like that. Uh, I recently was allowed to have a dance studio uh put in my building. Um. So this is something else that we should look at to uh allow um extra uses in there. Um, the one acre makes sense, as long as it has the frontage. Um. And it did cripple a lot of parcels out there. Uh, if you have a two acre piece. You would probably be hurting yourself by attempting to subdivide it, to sell an acre off of that, that piece. Um, if you have two acres, it would be a much more desirable. Um. Piece of land to develop, so the one acre would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead, Francisco, is there anything?
Okay.
I think.
That was it. Once again, I appreciate the comments. Okay, let's shift gears a little bit and, and go northwest to Kensington Village Core Area two. Uh, now, we're in, in part revisiting a discussion that we've had with uh planning and zoning several months ago. Uh, as part of our, the zoning work that we've done with them, following up the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Plan. And uh, so let me talk about the Village Core Area two. Um, it's in Kensington Village where you've had some development and, you know, some very successful development around your train station. And that, the zoning there is comprised of an overlay zones two, actually, Core Area one. Uh, which is, you know, medium density development, that's where you've had most of your development. Or re- the most recent development has been there, and you have mixed-use development, right? There are apartments, some street-level retail. And then Core Area two, which is most of the site. So if you can make out the details or the colors here, this light blue hashing. Is Core Area two, and the yellowish gold hashing is, is uh Core Area one. Uh, now, as I mentioned, it's an overlay, and so it overlays the zoning districts that are currently in much of this area. Most of this area. Is the CCD two. Uh, zoning district. What the overlay allows is it allows for mixed-use development, allows for slightly higher intensity of uses, but mostly enables mixed-use development. Uh, throughout the Kensington Village area. Um, now, some of the challenges surrounding that are that, like, similar to our conversation up down the BT one, BT two. Uh, there's a minimum lot size requirement. Um, and there are density limits. So, first of all, most of lots in the Core Area two are less than an acre. There are, there are plenty of lots that are. Fairly sizable, but if we look within the triangle here. The, these lots are half an acre, at some of them less than that, or most of them are less than an acre. Alright, you, the Core Area two requires a one acre minimum for residential development. Um, and there is a limit of, it was six, and Maureen, it, was that effectively adopt, change to seven? Is that correct?
Seven per acre if it had an affordability com- um, component.
With the twenty percent affordability opponent, if you're, component, if you're over six units.
Yes.
Um, so even at seven units per acre, we're, we are talking about. A very low density. And so the challenge here is we have more than half the lots just don't qualify to have. Multifamily or mixed-use residential development. Because the lots aren't big enough. And this is not, this. This housing densities, unit density per lot, per acre. Is not prorated, which means when you get to an acre, you can have six, but if you, if you have half an acre, you can't have three units. You have to get to an acre, you can have seven, excuse me. You have half an acre, you can have three or four, right? You have to get to an acre to have seven. And then if you have one point nine nine acres. You still get seven, right? You don't get thirteen or fourteen, you get, you get seven because it's not prorated. Um, we did introduce an affordability requirement for ending over six units per acre. Uh, that was a recommendation of the Affordable Housing Plan that we did to require. Certain percentage of units that are affordable, and we think that's a very good provision, and that's recently adopted, and we think that was a very good idea. Now, the challenge to this area, as I just mentioned, first of all, is small lots. So ideally, these lots would, you have an owner that would buy a few of these lots. And then they would have enough land area to do a mixed-use development with, with residential. However, uh, the cost of acquiring two, three properties. Demolishing what's, whatever's on that property. And then constructing to get a few thousand square feet of retail with. Seven units of residential above it, it just doesn't pencil out, the, the math doesn't work. And so we don't expect that the regulations, as they are currently written. Are gonna be highly effective at, at getting any change or movement for these small lots. If someone has all the area. If someone has all the area already, then yes, and we, we understand you've had some development applications of that nature come forward. But those are generally for properties that already have the area. Now, if we want to see any movement uh for many of these small lots on this entire west side, west side of the railroad tracks. Part of the zone, really something needs to change to unlock that. Now, I know there are, from our prior discussions, I know there are concerns about density in the village. And um overbuilding and the impacts to parking or traffic. And so we understand those concerns. Uh, you know, that being said, I, I think, and, and maybe people have different opinions on this, but I think that. The center has done a very good job of absorbing the development that has occurred and it, it's made a better place. Um, so for perspective, what I did is I put together some density slides. And there, we have a lot of resources in this area, but I, I uh, I have one particular. Resource, kind of a report that I pulled from. So let me walk you through what we're talking about when we talk about density. Um, and what that looks like. And I'll, I'll do that very quickly. I don't want to spend too much of your time on this. So right now, currently limited to seven units per acre and, and Maureen, remind me, Village Core Area One, is it twenty? Maureen or Jim, twenty units per acre?
Um, I'd have to look it up.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Thank you, Jim. Twenty-six. Okay. So in this area, right, this hashed area, twenty-six units per acre, across the street, seven. Right? Three plus times multiplier, right? Three and a half times multiplier. So what does that look like? So first of all, when we talk about seven acres, in, in most of these density guides I have, seven acres doesn't even show up because it's not considered dense. Uh, so this is one of my favorite guides. Um, it's got some nice visuals on what that development looks like. At ten to twelve units per acre, that's typical of cluster housing. You know, open space subdivision, cluster housing, whatever you want to call it. Those are often ten to twelve units an acre. So we're already, we're talking about even cluster housing, open space development. Which, you know, are often not served by sewer and water that are sometimes dependent upon septic and wells. Are typically accommodate ten to twelve units per acre or can accommodate ten or twelve units per acre. When we go up to twelve or eighteen units per acre, what we see that development density is more typical of townhouses. Uh, so attached townhouses, you know, five to ten attached. And those could be for rental or ownership. Uh, and a reminder, a townhouse is different from multifamily. In, in that you, you own everything vertically. Uh, so you own everything above you or you rent everything above you. You've, you've got a front door, access to the street. And you've got the first, second, and if there's a third floor, third floor are all yours. So those are typically range twelve to eighteen. Uh, so now we're double what's allowed in Core, Core Area Two. Um, cluster and main or homes, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that we see that many of this type of development in Connecticut, but uh. These are large structures designed to look like big houses or big old mansions in which case, in which. Case they're carved up into multiple units uh above and below each other. So that's how they're a little different than a townhouse. Its units can be above and below each other. Those are fifteen to twenty-two an acre, so roughly two to three times what's allowed in Core Area One. And that, that's, that's some very neighborhood-like development, if you ask me. Garden apartments. Now here we're getting in, in garden apartments. I've, I've never really cared for that term. It's very dated, but um. Here we're getting into the densities that are a little more consistent with Core Area One. And uh, we're talking about buildings, right? Three stories are typical. And uh, we've got units ma- maybe mixed with some retail on lower level. And so then we're beginning to see that, you know, what you have in Core Area Two is getting at around this density, maybe not this style or design, but at about this density. And then, and then the next up was, is really high density. Where in, to get to this density, you really have to have a structured parking. You have to have a garage. And so you typically put that garage in the center and you wrap it with the housing. And then you put a pool on top of the garage. And uh. And, and so the density range just keeps going, right? I'm, I'm not gonna bother you showing you what a hundred or a hundred fifty or two hundred looks like because that's, you know, that's not Kensington. A village, that's not Berlin. But what I do want to impress upon you, the fact is that seven is, is not dense. Seven is a single family type of density, seven units per acre. It, it's, you know, you have small lot, single family cluster. Um, it, it is a very low density. So you, you really can't expect. Too much to occur on those properties with the regulations as they're currently written, because it really doesn't incentivize much. Um, you're really dependent upon a lot that's already a, a fairly good size. That wants to do a good amount of commercial space on lower ground floor or first couple of floors. And then the residential is kind of a bonus for them. But you really can't make it with a primarily residential development at seven u- units per acre. Particularly if you don't, if you're working with one or two acres. So that being said, I'll just go back to. My map here. That being said, I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have or receive any comments.
Commission, any questions at this time? Economic develop- oh, June.
Just as, this is June, um, planning and zoning, um, just to get a better vision of the six or seven units. Per acre, like how, how many square foot would like each single development be? And would that be homes that are right next to each other? Are they individual or are they, you know, maybe just a picture for me?
So yeah, and that could take a lot of forms. The way, the intention of the Village Core Area Two is for. To support multifamily development on top of, in a mixed use format, right? On top, either on top of retail or at the back or behind retail. So we're, these regulations aren't currently written to allow for single family development in this area. But the densities that it allows are more comparable with single family development than they are with mixed use development. And I, I hope that answered your question.
Okay, great. Anyone from economic development have any further questions?
I see Chris, it's the hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um, it, it just, the reasoning behind this being added to the mix is. I in discussion with a handful of property owners is, is to give them a secondary option for redevelopment. So let's take the corner properties, the three corner properties, the two, three, four family houses in the vacant lot next to Dairy Queen. He has point five nine acres. He can't do anything right now. He can collect rent and he'll be a happy guy. If we gave him a secondary option and it was reasonably bankable, not to say he'd do it, but he might consider it and with a, a huge gateway corner there. The other piece that I look at is Ron's Auto. Ron's Auto is at the very bottom. It's the basically, it's the furthest right property on the bottom side. One point two, one point three acres. Ron can essentially put a for lease sign out and he'll get forty phone calls in a week for somebody to do auto repair, probably to do used cars. I'd like to give him or someone that would, might buy an opportunity to do a mixed use development there. That would be complimentary to what's across the street, but be something that would be worth looking at. That's the main reason I'd like to see a greater density, not to see tons and tons of units, but if a redevelopment was gonna happen. To be something that we want to see. Because right now there are properties that are just, they've been there for a while. And I think what we've seen there, and again, I'm not saying huge densities like across the street. I don't think that's reasonable. But if you did a twelve or fifteen units an acre and you prorata. The guy in the corner could get seven or eight units. That's probably something you can go to bank with. But with his parcels where uh. You have Bank of America on one side, Dairy Queen on the other, he uh, can't do anything. So that, that was the main reason for this. And there's a handful of property owners who really wanted it brought up as a discussion point. I, I understand it was something, it doesn't make sense, but that's really, from my perspective, if we're gonna see redevelopment of properties along Farmington Avenue. This is where the money's going. This is where the opportunity is. And even if it's a smaller version of Mark and Tony did. To me, i- it's beneficial to at least consider it. So I, I thank you for letting me comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, as I had stated, it's a, it's a lot of information that we're taking in all at once. So I think we're gonna have to sort of settle back on our own and, and go through the material as well. But I do want to thank you, Francisco, for the presentation. Um, and um. At, at this point, because we have a whole planning and zoning uh meeting ahead of us. Um, I'm just going to say, is it okay that we just sort of take in the information? And that will, um, we'll come back to this. And thank you for everyone's comments. Um, and we'll take everything under consideration at this point. So I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn this segment for this part of the meeting.
I'll move to adjourn the combined meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the combined meeting. And do we have a second by? Mr. Zigma? All right. Further discussion on this and all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And thank you guys for coming out for the economic development and um, and your input. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
All right, good night, everyone. And for those who are just joining us, we want to welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Does anyone need a break before we go in to our regular meeting? Okay. All right. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's going to be at eight twenty-nine. Okay? And so I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. For the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. Do we need a, well, we already have the roll call for the members of the commission. Dyken is still seated. Andrea Miller is excused. And moving on, approval of the minutes for June twentieth. And at that meeting was Ms. Daly, Mr. Zigma, Ms. Jorsy, myself, Mr. Rogan, Mr. Miller, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Dyken and Mr. Biella. So has everyone had a chance to look at the main, the meeting minutes for June twentieth? Are there any corrections?
Uh, I didn't note any corrections. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Ms. Jorsy, a second by Mr. Hamel, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, moved. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan. And um, uh, up next is a receipt of the new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. First item, if to be scheduled, is special permit with site plan application of LPM Holding Incorporated to utilize the kitchen. And the EverSource for a school lunch program at one oh seven Selden Street, property of Rocky River Realty in the OT Zone. Yes.
Um, so given the um, number of the, the agenda and the pen, number of pending items or lack thereof. We did go ahead and um, and send this to be published for the August first meeting. But of course, that can still be modified by the commission if that doesn't work for you. This, this two-week turnaround with the public hearing notices has gotten very tight.
Okay, I, I have a question about this. One oh seven Selden Street.
This is EverSource.
This is at EverSource.
At the EverSource building, they have a kitchen. And they have a company that would like to utilize their kitchen. Provided the application, well, of course, you actually have it in, um, the meeting packet that. It's been left for you for the next meeting. We're trying to distribute those when we can at the meeting, so. We're not racing at the last minute. Um, we haven't done our um, staff review yet, but we do feel it's a different entity at the. Um, and that kind of use um, does require the special permit.
Just out of curiosity, don't, don't schools have kitchens?
Um, they're, my understanding is they're substantially bringing in packaged foods from other local vendors. Um, at schools. That's a business model that schools are embracing.
Okay, well, commission.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to schedule this for public hearing on August first.
All right, a motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Zigma, further discussion. This should be interesting. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay, moving along. Discussion of possible scheduling of staff consultant proposed text amendments. That's what we just heard.
That's whether or not, depending on what happened at that joint meeting, whether.
All right.
They were ready to be scheduled. I would recommend they're not.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we pass on that for now? Yeah, okay, commission. We'll pass on that at this point. Okay, moving on to commission business. Review and recommendation in accordance with the eight twenty-four for the Connecticut General Statutes for the Town Roof Replacement. Two thousand and twenty-four project. Are we leaking?
I guess we're in pretty bad shape.
Um, you mean like the roof over our heads, right? At this very moment as we speak?
This is a referral um, action by the town council to the Planning and Zoning Commission, subject to. General Statute eight twenty-four for the town hall and the library center.
Okay, so.
Building. However, I want to point something out.
Yes.
Um, section eight twenty-four municipal improvements of the statutes um, as criteria. And I, there's the provision in eight twenty-four is. And let me, I'll read it from you. The provisions of this section shall not apply to maintenance or repair of existing property, buildings or public ways. Including but not limited to resurfacing of roads. So as far as eight twenty-four goes, I don't know that it's required by statute that the commission actually got this. But the town council did make the action for the referral. Perhaps there's an ordinance that I'm not aware of or because of the bonding or something else. So my suggestion is that the commission um, do determine whether or not they want to make a favorable ref- referral with the notation that. Not a required referral, but if I, the statute, but that.
I mean, obviously.
I think, so the eight twenty-four statute is.
Yeah, just.
Often misunderstood and it's very hard to determine, you know, as you read through it and.
They're covering their voices.
We could bring it up, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's readily available and it has, you know, the different types of things that require referral, purchase of property, easements. Um, extending things, abandoning roads, et cetera. So you know, there's a lot to it and I think it's just a matter of who, who interpreted whether or not it's required.
Well, I mean, they sent it to us and I mean, who are we to stop them from putting on a roof? But I hope that they look into different types of roofing that may have a longer lifespan than twenty years. Unless they're, of course, looking to build a new town hall. Um, I would really encourage them to start looking into um, metal roofing. It's expensive, but it'll last forever. June, did you have a comment? I thought I saw something flash. I'll look here. Anyone else? No? Okay. So, I mean. We'll decide.
I, I agree with you. The roof should not be, but what it is now, it should be a metal roof or, or new uh. New type of roof that they have. They have all kinds of different.
Yeah, they're coming out with all sorts of.
That are, are last forever.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, uh, and I do recommend that to uh. And I recommend a recommendation to approve, approve. They sent it to us, so.
Okay, so Mr. Zigma has a motion to approve or to give the nod. Any second by Mr. Hamel, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, so moved.
I have a question though. Um, the um, package is asking for action that um. That we uh move that an ordinance be passed, so um, or adopted.
Or is. Wait, wait, wait.
No, so the resolution was that they, the. Motion to move an ordinance appropriating was the motion to the town council.
Okay.
That's my reading of this. Let me, let me.
At the back of the package, it says that's the action needed, but.
So that was the package that went to the town council. I no longer rewrite. I no longer rewrite what the department had that, that gave the summary, wrote. I just feel that is less accurate. So get that as part of your package, but part of the action of the town council was to move to refer the town roof replacements, two thousand and twenty-four, to the planning and zoning for section eight twenty-four of the general statute.
Okay, so you have what you needed. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something.
Yeah.
Okay, good catch. Okay, thank you.
And I I will just comment that it also goes not only to town council, but um, to the building commission. So I believe would be um, the board that would most likely scrutinize material construction.
Yeah.
Materials and construction.
And we'll give it to the building committee. Okay, terrific. All right, so. All right, thank you for catching that. All right, bond reductions. Uh, first up, we have Ten Steel Boulevard. They have a request for a bond reduction. And um, how did they do with that?
So in your pa, in your supplemental package, you have the recommendation from the Deputy Director of Public Works um, that the maintenance bond in the amount of two thousand seventy-nine dollars may be released at this time.
Okay.
The plantings have been in.
And that would leave.
Over a year.
And that would leave that, then everything is spent. Is that the last of the monies?
That's for that particular bond, that project overall, because that's our TOD project. It has several bonds in place. Well, I don't know which ones are still in place, but each, each parcel of the development has, is separate.
This is the last re- release, right? It's, it's been a year, established for a year.
Yes, this is release of the maintenance bond.
On the maintenance.
And this is the maintenance, okay.
We did only reduce it a few months back, but things were done in June of two thousand and twenty.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Zigma. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, who got that one? Oh, Mr. Dyken, thank you. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed. Thank you, Rogan. And uh, next up, we have the Quantum of Berlin Two, five ten four Rod Road. Replaced request for bond reduction on the site plan. And.
So um, also in your supplemental package, you have a revised bond sheet. It would probably be. The original bond sheet is in black and white behind it. And the recommendation is to reduce that bond to sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. As calculated by our engineering division.
All right, do we have a motion or questions or?
Make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Um, next up is going to be, I think I just lost my agenda. Hang on, no, here it is. Jet Development. Um, IUD and Sons, zero Chamberlain Highway Map fourteen dash one block twelve, lot thirteen. This is a bond reduction?
Um, this will be a release. This will be a release, and you spare with me and try not to blasp. The bond was, um, the fill permit um, was issued in the early nineties, was extended, et cetera. Um, and the bond was received, I believe, on, as it's shown in the bond sheet that we finally found uncovered, unearthed. Um, May seventeenth, nineteen ninety-four. Our finance department is working diligently with the multiple departments in town hall to go through.
Ms. Jorsy.
Bonds and monies that have been held and to release monies that no one ever came to the town to ask to be released. That's the process. The process is that up a bond, you then come to the town and ask for it to be reduced or released. Um, this, I believe, happens to be one of the bonds that's interest-bearing. So it does create paperwork for the town every year. And we no longer have interest-bearing bonds, but now that these old ones are, um, and that's a burden on the town. So after attempts to um, contact and get the original holder of the bond to ask for release, um, were, resulted in no contact. Um, we decided that it's in the, in our best interest to ask for the release ourselves. And if the entity that the um, funds would be released to, um, can't be found, the money was, would be assheeted to the state. We don't have a valid address, and then it's still their obligation to go through that process to be on that state list of lost money. And you, rightful owner, goes through a process that the state has to prove their, their right to that money. Um, as far as the bond itself, the bonding itself. Um, this is a vacant parcel um, here in front of, for lack of a better word, Burger um, Nursery. Near the, the range, the gun range over there. Um, the, they had the fill permit. It, the property has changed hands. The new owners have done significant regrading and, and work on the property as well. Um, and so whatever work was done by that, by Jet Development is irrelevant because there's been subsequent work done. Um, the town has not had to step in and do any of the work. Um. There has been enforcement orders and whatnot of some of the work that was done without getting permission. But the work related to this bond itself is not relevant to the conditions today.
The bond entity is no longer in existence. That's.
So that's where we would go, we, the, the town and or the state would.
That's that company been dissolved and through a state and stuff.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. All right.
Had a couple of those, and you might, I will hopefully see a few others as we continue to muddy our way through finding out who the right entities are.
Make a motion to um, release this bond money consistent with the um, consistent with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second? Come on, second. So who's got the second? Mr. Hamel this time. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. All right. Um, next up, we have a discussion. There's three discussions we have slated, which is charging station installations, ACT Lab, and minutes posted. Are, are any of these essential right now? Can we just bypass them? Continue them over?
Um, well, I do.
Because of lateness of the hour.
We do have the, I believe, the person who wrote the letter that's in your packet regarding the charging stations. I think he's here.
Okay, do we have somebody here for charging stations?
He's here. I don't know that you want him to speak or not. He was downstairs talking to Polly one week.
Well, maybe.
Oh.
He is, okay. Well, if he comes back, we'll talk to him. And the minutes posted is, oh, that's the.
Well, the second one is ACT Lab.
Yeah.
We, I did find out on my way in that they um, found the interested party, asked that the discussion be postponed to the next meeting. They had a last minute um, conflict and couldn't get here.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, they asked that that happen.
I don't know. No.
Okay.
It's just a discussion. And then the minutes uh, posted, uh, and that was just.
So this is um.
Someone was upset.
I have to handle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the um, we, we've had this discussion, but I would like to um, read a letter I've written to you into the record.
Okay.
Acknowledge that minutes were not posted within the seventies as required um, by statute for. And uh, well, if you don't mind, bear with me if I'll read the letter.
Go.
Have them.
Go right ahead.
Um, I want to formally acknowledge and apologize for the department delay in preparing and posting of minutes, as well as their distribution for commission approval. As we have discussed in a couple of meetings in the past, there are several reasons we fell behind in preparation and posting of meeting minutes. We have had a rather high volume of matters on most of the agendas, which have resulted in long, upwards of three to four hour-long meetings. And complex matters that have resulted in technical and detailed testimony, as well as public testimony. Position of land use administrator is assigned to writing the minutes from the audio and videotapes of the meeting. This is accomplished during the regular workday when other daily tasks, including responding to phones and walk-ins at the counter, interrupt concentration required to write minutes. We have estimated initial draft typing may take two to three times the length of the meeting to complete. Retirement of our beloved, I'm going to add beloved to my memo. Thirty-five-year administrator left a void of experience with the vacancy of, and the position empty for almost four full months. I'm sorry, I messed up that sentence.
Well.
Um, the technical nature and reliance on minutes, including for decision writing, permit issuance, and litigation also requires editing by the professional staff to ensure correct terminology and important points are included prior to posting, so that misinformation isn't disseminated. Simultaneously, simiter, similar editing time was required while working with corporation counsel to edit transcripts of meetings related to a couple of different litigations. Due to workload and staffing challenges, and knowing that the meeting content of a full Zoom recording of each meeting was posted, generally within days or a week of each meeting, for public access on YouTube and with a link on the town website, I made the decision to prioritize other obligations of the department in lieu of consistently meeting the seven-day posting of minutes requirement. The top department is substantially obligated, obligated with statutory deadlines for processing commission applications, as well as building permits and court deadlines related to litigation. While the part-time clerk clerk worked with me, the town planner, to learn minute writing while she had time. And the assistant town planner joined the team in mid-December of two thousand and twenty-three. And as she became familiar with department matters, also worked on some of the backlog. The concentrated effort to meet minute deadline and catch up was made once the land use administrator was refilled in the position was refilled at the end of January. The land use administrator was new to the position, coming from a different branch of government, which required time to transition and become familiar with the information of the department. I determined it would be in the town's best interest that the current meeting minutes be the priority, so we would not fall further behind and work on catching up on the older minutes between those times. We have rectified the challenges and moving forward, we're at full staffing for the first half of the year. We have lost our part-time clerk, but we're going to refill her position. Um, it's only, it's ten hours a week, so you know, it's not substantial, but it is a lot of help. Um, the land use administrator has quickly become familiar with department matters, which results in a more accurate and quicker pace of minute preparation. She plans her workload to allot time in the days following each meeting to premiere minutes. The office has a second professional planner, the assistant town planner, that attends the meetings, make notations, and therefore is available to assist in editing and proofing the minutes. And the department workload has been dispersed across multiple and staff members now in place to handle interruptions, so the concentrated tasks such as minute writing and proofing can be more focused. Meeting links have thankfully become more reasonable with some litigation preparation complete and our other matters settled. While we are now looking to replace the part-time clerk, she did some organizing before leaving. And with the current more reasonable number of pending matters and applications, all which should allow us to further hasten the pace of catching up on any remaining backlog department tasks. So I'm, again, I'm sorry for the delay. I'm sorry for that happening.
Well, it's a very nice apology. Uh, wasn't, we, as the commission understood, but I, I guess it had to be noted for the public as well. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, public hearings, we're going to move up.
Like to say that reading this last minutes that we just approved, that the minutes are more accurate and, and more in-depth than, than I've ever seen. And I, I got to compliment you, you're doing a great job.
Okay, we may.
Okay.
We may be trying to streamline them a little, so they're not quite as lengthy, but we're still trying to get the accurate detail. Because we do rely on the minutes as we process applications, and sometimes that's five, seven years after something was approved and we have to sign a permit.
Okay.
And we rely on that.
Okay, we're going to move into the public hearings. And the first item is a subdivision application of Kokomo uh, two LLC for a two-lot subdivision of forty-four Rand Acres Lane for a lot created at Zero Club Drive. And this was opened way back in May, and we have used some extensions, I guess, but um, we are still in the public hearing. It is not uh, um, closed as of yet. So commissioners, do you have any questions? I know Mr. Kokomo is here.
Um, so you did.
Go ahead.
If I may, your supplemental package, you have the um, um, EMF information and material that was, I think some was distributed at the last meeting, or maybe it's in this package, and was also, as requested, um, and additional um, documents added to that. Kokomo sent in some that was sent, that was included. Um, and you have updated memo from, or comments, I think they're on a comment sheet, as opposed to seeing um, um, our town engineer with regard to the drainage.
Okay.
And that's, those were, we've, meaning, um, pending issues. Your packet also includes some public comment that's been received in the meantime, and some photographs mostly do. Uh, mostly related to drainage and um, the um, road issues that I believe um, Director of Public Works, Mr. Ahern, mentioned in his comments. Pull them up if I can. Second to read if you need anything read. I was like, do.
Just give me a second here.
You'd like me to read my.
Yeah, go.
Comments.
Yeah, go ahead, because I just wanted to take a look at something.
All right, for the record, the app, um, he's on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I'm the town engineer. The applicant's revised plan dated seven two twenty-four now includes a trench drain to capture stormwater runoff from the eastern portion of the proposed driveway. Stormwater entering the trench drain will be routed to a larger subsurface stormwater galley via six-inch diameter PVC piping. Note that the existing six-inch diameter water main that runs through the western portion of the proposed driveway limits the trench drain's location to the west downhill. Additional information provided by the applicant's engineer, which addressed our other prior comments, indicates that the galley system east of the proposed house can accommodate runoff from up to eighty-eight square feet of impervious area. This should be considered for any subsequent permitting by the building department. So as much impervious surface, up to the maximum of eight hundred and eighty square feet, is routed to this uphill and more internally located stormwater system. Our department is aware of comments regarding existing drainage uses in, drainage issues in the area and will evaluate potential improvements as part of any future repaving projects in the vicinity. We have no further comments on this application. Please contact me with any questions.
Okay, this, this galley thing that he's talking about, or?
Oh, can you?
Yeah, did he say it was going to be uphill?
So one galley is at more of an uphill area of the site. And I'm not an engineer, so let's, let's put a caveat on that, is at the more uphill side of the site. So um, as he explained it to me, he, and looking at the plans, um, if the bulk of the drainage is routed to that galley system, then should the, should there be a large event, it would have more surface area on the site itself runoff, because it would be being absorbed by the parcel itself. And then the other galley system is further down and would take the rest of it. But he wants to route it to that one, so that it's, that, that the drain, the water spends more time on the site as it dissipates. But he wants to route it to that one, so that it's, that, that the drain, the water spends more time on the site as it dissipates.
I guess I'm, I'm just a little confused, because visually, I'm thinking of this galley system, part of it, part A is gonna be higher in elevation than part B. So part A is gonna supposedly catch what water? Water coming off the house, or, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just trying to visualize what's happening here during a heavy rainstorm.
Want me to introduce myself?
Yeah, go ahead.
For the record.
Just for the record, please, Tom.
Thomas Kokomo, One Fitzwilliam Park, Connecticut. Thank you, Madam Chair. The design is so to have a, a zero net increase post-construction be all impervious portions of the property would, or water needs to be captured, and essentially that's the, the new roof and new driveway. So all leaders be, all roof gutters will drain to leaders, which will be and dug into the ground and into this new galley system. He wants those run to the back, like Maureen said. And if that overflows, there's still, there still is enough capacity there, what he, what he wrote, that that if it did overflow, at, I'll say a hundred-year storm, and it, and it would sheet flow on the property, and some of it would then dissipate through the lawn. And then if it got to the bottom of the property, which is the east, the west side of the property, there's that drainage that will pick up runoff from the driveway, but then also has capacity to take additional flow. And I didn't, I didn't hear it when Maureen read it, but I was under the impression that it was, he stated it was adequate. More than adequate.
Okay, so this galley A, the first galley, is going to collect the water from all of the drainage from the roof. So all your, basically all your, I'm just gonna paint, paint a picture. So all of your roof gutters are going to basically drain into one galley system. Or should I say pot or whatever, or a large area? And then from there, it's going to travel, you said, off to the back of the property? Or is it gonna come down to the, to the road? Is it coming down to Rand Lake, or is it going off to the golf course?
Oh, no. If you recall, at the Jan, the June twentieth meeting, we designed it, and we only had two galley systems. And there was some question from the engineer on a hundred-year flood, or a hundred-year storm, and would there be enough capacity based on the soils and those two chambers?
Yeah.
And there, the question was unanswered. I asked for us to approve via staff, and you said, no, let's come back and let's get it done. So what happened was that question was then answered, and he said, for the hundred-year storm or the two-hundred-year storm, I can't recollect what number was, but I will add a third, third galley at the westernly portion of the property at the bottom of the driveway. So if those do overflow and they come down the property, we'll grab it there. So that's just for overflow purposes.
Okay.
So it dissipates, I guess your question is, where does the water go? It goes into the ground, but if there's so much velocity that the ground can't take it, it'll overflow and come back up of the, of that, and then come down the property and grab that next drain.
Can you, can you just point out where these, do you see where, I'm, because I'm looking at this little fine print here, and maybe I don't have my best glasses, but just so we could see where this galley system is.
Confirm this is the most updated plan?
Is, is this the most updated plan? It says revision July second, twenty twenty-four. So is that what that?
Try to make sure that we're, we pulled up the right one. We have multiple iterations. July fifth, was received by us July fifth, so that's about right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's that one in the back.
Oh, there it is. There it is. I'm sorry. Think it was the most recent plan.
And then this thing is a galley system.
This is the galley system in the drive. Would take the, more than the eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet, and this one up here would, if the town engineer is asking that as much flow be directed to this one up here as its capacity will take, so that because of, you know, I need to see the topography, the land goes this way. So it would be if there is overflow, then it would, you may not, it would have the chance to percolate.
But I guess.
On the site.
And I, I'm not an engineer, but I guess I, I love the old school that water does not go uphill. So I guess I, I'm having a problem.
Well, the, remember, these would be underground. So your, your roof is higher than, than below grade.
So it's all gonna pipe out to the back?
So, so you're, you're up here at the roof, so even if your basement's down here, if your backyard's here, your roof is still higher and, and the chambers are underground. Again, I'm not an engineer, and I
Oh, no, I mean, I, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to envision it.
But, but you're, you're coming down, and then it's going underground into the chambers.
Yeah, but it's gotta come out somewhere.
No, it doesn't have to come out, that's where you're
No, they're piped to those under
But we're, okay.
On the roof leaders.
Okay.
And leaders are installed underground
Yeah.
To the chamber.
And what, and so it all just sort of gathers in this chamber?
So I
Which is
Remember, I don't know if you recall, but that's, was one of your questions, Madam Chair, was what is the design? And the design is there large, and what happens is, is it's overexcavated, and then there's excuse me, new material brought in, process, process, trap rock and sand. And so just like your, I don't know if you have a septic system.
Yes, I do.
Like your septic system, it percolates into
Yeah. Okay, anyone else have any questions?
I do think that June brought up the power lines, and I sent the, something from the EPA for, for that Maureen may have received.
This was on you, Sam?
Yeah.
You have, you have a number of.
I mean, essentially, essentially in there, and I'm paraphrasing, but I believe it's stated, let me just see here. Stated that sent to you. EPA classifies in all other non-ionizing energy as generally perceived as harmless humans, and that comes from that. So I'm, so good to hear. neighbors.
Mike, ask a question?
Sure.
When, when is this picture from this one?
Yeah, I haven't gotten to that.
Is it not attached to an email? Hey, I thought all the pictures we had were attached to emails. So show me that one again.
Yeah, there's some, oh, there's some color pictures.
I'm sorry, I thought it was the one I was looking at. So Mike Ahern, some, some of the testimony was received to Mike Ahern. He then forwarded it to our department so that we could include it in the record. I think the one you're looking at came in email dated Tuesday, July second. Mr. Ahern, I am writing to you regards in the recent public hearings about dividing Zero Club Drive. Is my understanding that you are involved in the review process of the water issues in the area? I've lived at Four Lincoln Street, Berlin since nineteen ninety-nine, and offer the following, that email, you want me to continue reading? Babbling away today. It's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, I, in, in regard to all those offsite, I believe Mike acknowledged that there's an issue there, that it's probably more of the town responsibility, and now that there's no impact from the new house, proposed house, we would have no impact on a additional those, and I guess Mike says he'll address them when he gets to it, so maybe at least sooner rather than later.
So.
I gotta agree, looking at these pictures and everything else, I gotta agree, there is a problem up there in the road. So there is a town problem. But there is a problem of other waters coming into the road beside your property. And but there was coming from your property, a couple of these pictures. You know, I think there probably should, probably should be a cooperative effort of the town and the developer to address the problem. You know, it's a it's a problem that I've seen over a long time, and you know, and it goes all the way to the cross the street to the Shadow Meadow Golf Course property that gets upon to and, and I'm not putting it all on the developer, but this property does contribute to it. And with the engineering, I'm assuming with the engineer saying that, our engineer is saying that the engineering systems will work. But, you know, we had a lot of one-hundred-year storms lately, every week, almost. So that's, that's why I think it's being shown a lot more than it has been because of the storms we have beginning. So I, you know, this is going to be a continuing problem in the area.
Can I just say, can I just say something sort of to dovetail on that? I think, I think my concern is this, is I understand, again, I'm not an engineer. I understand what our town engineer is saying, and thank you for helping me visualize how this thing is gonna work. But for the life of me, I keep thinking about these heavy rainstorms that we've been having more and more lately. And my fear is this, is that the whole system is gonna get so overwhelmed that it's actually gonna bring everything that's being in these galley systems or whatever up and over and onto the property, which would be a mess for your homeowner, that's for sure. But I, I just, I, I look at the pictures and I, I see what I, I've heard the testimony from the other public hearings before, and I know where the concern is coming from. And I'm not sure that this system, because the drainage problems exist now, and to define them or to direct them seems to, I think, ask for more trouble in, in the long run. In other words, I, I'm seeing us, we're building a system to try to accommodate Mother Nature, but Mother Nature may have something else to say about it, and she might just overwhelm it. And I'm, I'm worried or concerned that if the system does get overwhelmed with a heavy rain, and you find all this water coming off the roof or the pavement or whatever being funneled down to an already saturated property, what will the end result be? I, I don't know. And I do know that you, I guess there's a sump pump. Do, you can have a basement in this house? Is that the intention?
Intent is to have a basement, and we would just pre-rill and set the site up for a sump pump if necessary, but that's common in every, that's actually code in every new home now in the state of Connecticut, so. But, you know, you, like you said, you're not an engineer, neither my. Two engineers looked at it, said that there's not gonna be an impact. I understand, we do, I, I agree with Tim. It sounds like we have a hundred-year flood every day, other day, but your problem, Tim should know, he's said he grew up in the area. Problem over there, it's a problem that, that there is no storm drain for there, and the town of Berlin doesn't have, has neglected their duty for a long time, and the fact that a new property, which is gonna have zero impact, and both engineers stated that it would be impossible for it to, 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 to be the culprit of your existing problem. You have an existing problem. And that's probably where you should focus, and, and maybe when, it's interesting when the town engineer says we'll get to it. I think there's more of a, should have a little bit more diligence and, like you know, be there a little bit sooner, if that's the case, if you think that's the problem, you should have, maybe, maybe make that a priority. I don't, but you know, if, 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 if you're, this commission's entitled to their opinion, I, all I, all I say is that the engineers have a license, have a responsibility, and your engineer is, is, is on board with the system, and then I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. I appreciate where you're coming from. Any of the commissioners have the questions at this point, before I go to the
One more thing that I wanted to go over. When I looked at the map, the last meeting, top floor of the basement and of the system in the rear is on the same level. So, so, you know, if it's go drain lower than the system, you would think the system would have to be lowered than the basement floor. I, my question, not being an engineer, my question is that with the water on this lot and have to have these detention systems, I don't know if this, this house should have a basement. It should be on a slab or, or or crawl space or something that gets this basement off that level where the retention systems are. So, you know, that's not being an engineer, I just
Yeah.
You know, using it on my head when, when I see the same level on the engineering plans, I question it.
Timmy, one last time, listen, if you guys can't and you, you, you have to, you have to be able to have faith and trust in your town staff. If you don't, what are we paying him a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for?
I, I agree with you.
I think it's just, I, I think it's not even a question, it's not really a question of that, Tom. For me, it's just a question of coming to terms with decision that I have to make as a commissioner.
Appreciate it.
And I, I just hope you appreciate the fact that, in, in my particular instance, I think, the commission as well, we do not want to make a bad situation worse through our decision. Again, I'm just still trying to figure out, and like, like you said, you pointed out something with, there should be drainage on that street, and perhaps you are correct on that. But I'm, I'm still thinking about this volume of water going into these retainers, and then them having no place to go out to. And, and that's my concern, is that it's not being piped out anywhere, it's not being taken down to another point.
Joan, but I understand that, but you realize now, this is also, this is also very standard nowadays. We didn't put it on there because we didn't think it was a, there was a problem, but it's now become standard practice to do these. So on all your new subdivisions, you'll be seeing them. But again, all I can say is, I appreciate, you know, you have a responsibility, and I get it, to not only to instill public trust, right? That's your responsibility, and that's, and, and I get it, but, but again, there is, you had that concern on June twentieth, and you said, no, you need to send this back to my, our town engineer. Our town engineer said, it's out of
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how the whole thing works. Anyway, okay. So Ms. Justy was able to reach Mr. Ahern, and he is going to attempt to join the meeting. And just for the record, it should be noted that the applicant's consulting engineer is not present, correct?
Not present.
All right, while we're waiting for the applicant's engineer, or it's our town engineer, do we want to go ahead and seeing that the commission does name Um, do we want to go ahead and seeing that the commission doesn't have any questions, we can see whether or not there's any comments. What? June has a question. Cause I just want to get through the public really quick too.
Go ahead.
I'll try to be quick. Uh, Mr. Kokomo, and I appreciate your time. Um, I was looking over the paperwork and I apologize for coming back to you. Can you please repeat your comment um, about the paperwork you submitted, the point you wanted to make with it? I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I, sorry, June. I thought I I thought I paraphrased them as saying that uh, I don't even know where it is now.
I know they are made a comment about non-ionizing radiation and that the power lines falls within that, that I believe was your comment, sir. Was that the case?
I thought that, yeah, I I thought I could look it up again.
And Maureen, this was the paperwork he submitted. Is that right? Well, I I can um, just go to my my thoughts on that, cause in reading the documents that you provided. Um, it does say while some of these studies showed a possible link between EMF field strength and increased risk for childhood leukemia. It was less of a connection between adults. And also later in the article, it says the magnetic field measures fifty seven point five milli gas immediately beside um, like a two thirty kilovolt transmission line. And then as you get further a distance away, like a hundred feet, it's seven point one and two hundred feet is one point eight. And I think that was one of the points I was trying to bring up at the last meeting was that my concern on being right off of the line where the house is being drawn in the plans, that your highest exposure is constant. Um, because you're within that measured distance as your article demonstrates. And then if you come off of that line, then that exposure is greatly reduced and it's a constant exposure, not compared to like a microwave or a phone or some of those things that are in or men. And that's where my concern lies.
I I think, and if you, if we read it more and I and I I briefly was reading it just earlier. I think it says something in there and maybe it'd be a good idea about um, trees or 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 natural buffers would would lower those readings. So uh, providees, for example, white pines, may be able to lower it.
But they're coming from overhead, so I don't think they would, they'd reach. And then there are some things that does protect or limit that exposure. But um, it isn't all materials, so.
Wait one second. My, our um, town engineer has joined the meeting.
Okay.
Um, I don't, and and I don't want you going back bouncing back and forth. If you have what you want to do, I just wanted you to let know that it was on.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hearn, thank you for joining the meeting. I uh, on behalf of the commission, uh, sorry you had to interrupt your evening, but we have some questions regarding this uh, gallow uh, process that's being proposed for the uh, grand acre um, subdivision. And I was wondering if you perhaps could answer some questions or call some concerns of ours.
Sure.
Okay.
What are the questions?
All right. Um, my question is this. Um, I know that we're looking at perhaps three gallows that are being proposed for the site. Um, is my understanding that rain from the roof line um, would be piped down and uh, sent off to the uh, first gallow. And it would be collected there. So I'm anticipating a heavy rainstorm. So water is running like crazy off the roof. It's being valeted out and down through the pipes and it goes into this first galley. Now this first galley fills up and naturally it's surrounded also by natural rain that's being soaked into the into the ground itself. And it will automatically uh, overspill to uh, a second and third galley, which would be on the front of the house near the street and and placed under the driveway as well. And if this vision or this explanation um, is is accurate so far, um, then let me continue and say that my concern is that as the systems may be overwhelmed and the lot itself and the street itself is given to flooding. Would this not eventually just add or make a bad situation worse for the neighbors and perhaps the future homeowner? I mean, where is this extra water all running to? Where is it being piped to? Is it just gonna sit in the earth? And hope to go down?
Yeah, let me just correct uh, how the system works.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the galley system east of the house, which is on the uphill internal portion will take part of the roof runoff and the engineer, um, the applicant's engineer indicated eight hundred and eighty square feet of impervious area could be handled by that galley alone, which is I think, let's see, that he said the 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 roof area was nineteen thirty. So it's like, it's 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 almost half of the roof can go to that one galley. If you see it's at the top of the screen there.
Yes.
Uh, above the house. It said, propose fourteen linear feet of cultech recharger. So eight hundred and eighty square feet of impervious, which right now is the roof, would go to that. The, if you go down to the bottom left of the house next to the driveway, you'll see there's a thirty, I think it's thirty something. Oh, thirty three feet, thirty. You see the thirty three or thirty five linear foot Celtic sys- cultech system. That system will take the remaining roof. And it's not a spillover system. It's basically two systems handling portions of the same roof. So the first system up to the north or up to the um, east is not, it won't fill up and then somewhere the flow will go somewhere else. The roof runoff and part of the driveway is going to the um, system to the lower left hand side, the larger system. So really, what the the applicant's engineer has done is split the subsurface systems up to handle the roof and driveway. So and then and then to answer your other question, what happens if we get a two hundred year storm? And because this system, these systems are actually, they will accommodate more than a hundred year storm. There's pop up vents that will, that are built into these systems. They'll pop up and they'll flow over land. And that's part of the requirement or the um, my recommendation um, is to have at least as much impervious go to that galley system that's on the uphill portion to allow when there is, and it will get exceeded. I mean, you could have a five hundred year storm. There's no way that these systems can handle that. Flow will go over land and I wanted to at least have as much impervious area directed to that uphill inland system to give the cha- the flow a chance to get, you know, absorbed as it goes over land to the left hand side or downhill toward Club Drive. Uh, hopefully that makes sense.
Okay. The system in the back and the system in front, the thirty five foot one in front, and then you said the fourteen foot one in the back. Are they joined at all? Or are they completely separate?
No, they're completely separate.
All right. The system underneath the driveway, how does that work? Do you have one more system?
No, it's, no, it's not actually under the driveway. That's a trench drain, like it's a linear drain that runs across the entire width of the driveway. So all of the sheet flow from the drive, let me say the garage door to the bottom. And you'll see that strip that's right there to the left of that. There's a manhole. It's it probably, I don't know if you can see it. It says D to the left of the driveway. That trench drain would then drain into that drainage manhole, which also accepts the roof leader drainage. And then it goes to the left into the the recharger system. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So basically we're back, it's a two galley system, correct?
Correct.
All right. So there is no third galley.
No, there's not.
Okay. All right. Uh, I was under the assumption that the trench along the driveway was actually part of a third system. Well, there's no fault here. I just want to make sure I'm clear for the understanding of it. Okay. Commission questions, follow up questions?
Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, Tim's like my uh, when I was looking at this uh, drawing last meeting, uh, top found the top floor of the basement and top of uh, of the galley in the rear were the same elevation. Is that a problem there or is it going to soak enough into the gravels and stuff they put in there? Uh, when they're the same elevation, I think maybe that would have a problem. I'm I'm not an engineer, you are.
Well, the end of the elevation, uh, let's see, I'm looking at the um, it says finished grade elevation, two seventeen point five.
Right.
Top, and that's exactly what the um, um, let's see, basement two oh eight, garage floor two fifteen. Oh yeah. So the first floor elevation is two seventeen point five, which is basically a grade. The pipe going out to that system is below grade. So the the top of that smaller system up at the top of the screen is what you're talking about, two seventeen. It extends below grade and the pipe that's going out of the house will be below grade. So it's actually below that level. And all the drainage is coming from the roof. So that's, you know, it's just coming down. Your gutters, your roof leader goes underground, pops out to this this system, which is probably several feet below grade. So no, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, I just saw the same grades in both places and I was concerned with the same grades.
Yeah, and 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 I would assume too, when they actually do this house, because remember this is a subdivision plan. I know this is house is going to fluctuate. They're gonna, there's gonna be a deck or something else. It's gonna be, this is a big box that's really meant to show um, how big they can put, how big of a structure they can put there, the driveway um, going out to the street as well as calculate the volume of stormwater that they have to accommodate. So this is going to change, you know? Um, so I would say when they do the refined grading, they might actually put the grade outside a little below the the first floor elevation. So you might have a couple of steps down at the front door, that kind of thing.
Okay.
One last question I have for you, Mike. Um, the trench that's in the driveway, what is the purpose of that?
It's it's essentially a linear drain. And a lot of times you'll see these in um, warehouses where you have a loading dock, you'll see basically a linear drain with a grate that's with slots in it. And it's meant to, in like, for example, our roads, we usually have a crown in the road, so we'll have a catch basin on each side. So the sheet flow goes to the curb and flows along the gutter and goes into the drains. This trench drain, because they have their grading is this sheet flow is going straight down to the street. The trench drain goes the entire width of the driveway. So as long as it's clean, the water that's coming down the driveway drops into this trench drain at that location, goes to the north, hits the drainage manhole, goes further north into the stormwater system. So that's the purpose of that. It basically is, it looks like a piece of metal with slots in it. The ones that I've seen, and you can drive their their uh, vehic- vehicular uh, uh, rated, so you can drive over them. They're pretty dirty and that's the, that's the purpose of that.
Yeah. Where's that man? What Michael's talking about, that manhole or whatever, that that where they're going to be drained to? Can you just show me where that is? Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, my eyes are getting worse with age, I think. Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna go to the public. Thank you, Michael or Mr. Hearn.
I'll wait around.
Okay, um, yes. Um, I know the hour's late, but I do want to give you a chance to Okay, that's all right. Yes, I know.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Lombino. I live at thirty Randdecker. Um, I just want to say, why are we going to tax a system that's already taxed? It's going to be by uh, the end of my backyard, what they're calling uphill, and it's going to be level with them where my backyard is. As you can see, this was from June thirtieth. I don't know.
Um, we're, you know, we need photos to be in print because we have to have them in the record.
Water, but you don't have my backyard and I'll send it to you. So wherever this, there's, there's no absorption. There's no absorbing. The water is coming up. So where, I mean, I'll send you, I'll email you my photos. Um, but there's no absorbing. And um, also forty seven club where he crowbarred a house in, I'm sure he said he was gonna do the same drainage. Um, I'm not sure what he put in there, but it's always flooded. The front yard is always flooded. So if that is the same attention that's going into this house, I'm very concerned. It's already flooding. Um, also, um, sorry, I'm like
That's okay. Good time.
Gosh, sorry. I had another point here. It's so long. Um, where's the, uh, my yard's flooding. Well, anyway, I know everybody else wants to speak. It's just, why are we going to tax a system that's already taxed? Sure, maybe the town needs to add another drainage system, but they're not. And it's not going to happen by this time, by the time this house goes up. Oh, that's what I wanted to say. This plan can't change because it's barely meeting the requirements. So if you're adding on a deck or you're changing things, it won't be in compliance anymore, right? Something to think about. This is supposed to be set in stone. This meeting should have been done on June twentieth, but he got another extension for handing things in late. They didn't know there was a day off and whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you and um, hope you make your babies.
Can, can I make a
Yes.
Point? So um, should you close the public hearing this evening? Um, we can't receive any testimony.
Yeah.
If it's emailed to me, that can be done. And that the um, and it's a subdivision application, not the specific of exactly the house.
Yes.
That was.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Charles Wilbur from eighty Club Drive. Uh, I'm sorry. I know you said that no further uh, information could be entered into the record. Do you have an email that?
After the public hearing.
So she was trying to show pictures and said she'd email them to be shared. And we can't share them. Like if she emails them to me and I get them tomorrow.
Right.
If the hearing gets closed tonight.
Certainly, I um.
We are at a timeline.
Yeah.
By closing the hearing, so.
To that, I I have a very illustrative uh, single photograph and two video clips. Is there an email to which I could send them so that we could see them on this screen now? I I'm ready to enter a uh, an address right here. I where should I send them? Please. Yes, the the still photograph, I'll just prepare it so we uh, save as much time as possible on that. Uh, is taken from today by me in my uh, dining room, looking across the street. Uh, and from my eye level, I am six four and I'm not quite level with the street that is in front of this um, downhill grade. Uh, as to just what is downhill. I know there have been some concerns about what does or doesn't flow up and downhill. I listened to the meeting. Thank you. Uh, that I was unable to attend uh, two, four weeks ago now, I think it was on the twentieth. That if flooding occurs uphill, that's their problem. That was just one thing I heard her thrown out. That seems a bit callous. Um, however, this isn't a, it doesn't have to be an uphill problem. You'll be able to see in just a moment uh, by just how much comes downhill. But also not discussed this evening um, is that also in this photograph, you'll see uh, the tree that uh, the plant is now off the screen there. There's one tree uh, where the house proposed is going to be feet away from and uh, you'll see it in this photograph as to where that tree is in comparison to the existing house at forty four. Uh, I don't live at forty four, but this proposed house is going to be placed in front of the facade of forty four Randdecker. Uh, which while the the owner of forty four may or may not have any concerns about that. Uh, as to developing in an orderly fashion, which was uh, read the very first meeting here as one of the core tenants of this planning and zoning committee. Uh, it's not an orderly fashion to place a house anywhere that we can, uh, especially in front of another because it physically fits the requirements. Uh, one other element of that is uh, forgive me, um, mouth dry, that we um, there it is. That's the tree um, on the right side there. Uh, if you can kind of keep in mind.
The house.
You see where the house is behind the tree and um, the proposed structure will fill in the space to the left of that tree. Um, it'll basically, I tried to line it up as best I could with the easement, this bar in my window you see there. That's about where the uh, the easement for the power company ends. And nothing is allowed to occur to the left of that. So. So, while I had not brought up any of the, uh, concerns about the, uh, the electromagnetic field, there was a suggestion that Arbivites might be able to block that. No Arbivites are going in that easement, um, they just came through and cut out of, gosh, hundreds and hundreds of branches and trees down that stretch, uh, in preparation for the new holes that are going in. Uh, but if we could go to the, uh, attached, there are two videos. One of these was taken by my neighbor, uh, who is here, uh, across the street there, um. Dan, what is your address again? Fifty-seven, from fifty-seven, um, and the other is taken by my wife from our driveway at eighty. Uh, there have been a lot of references this evening to one hundred year storms, two hundred year storms, even five hundred year storms, as to whether or not the system can or will handle that, and whether there will be any new impact from the, uh, the new development if it is to happen. It's really not a question if you'll, if you see what I see, as to whether there will be any new impact, there's simply no room to breathe. If, if I could just request replay, there's, there are the two, uh, dot M O V files at the top there. I'm sorry.
I think you need to move that taskbar with the audience there. No?
Yeah, the taskbar is just on your screen, her screen actually.
Oh, it's not to the left? Okay, okay, well, that's amazing.
Download it.
I know. My husband's recording it, though.
Well, why don't you call him and tell him to hold on?
Just as long as I'm standing here and we can't see it yet. Also read into the record at the previous meeting on the twentieth was that if, uh, if there's a concern about being too close to the maximum of compliance, that those numbers were just what was originally proposed and the building could be shrunk, um, you're now looking at fitting a facade that's probably a little shorter than this wall back there, if you try to move it off of either one of those sides. Just as a comparison point. This one is the video, I believe, take, if you wouldn't mind just playing it, this one, you'll, you'll see something very similar in both. Yes, this is taken by my wife, uh, this is my side yard, it is across Club Drive. That gray house across the street there is Forty Seven Club that, uh, Mr. Kokomo did build. Um, the other video will get a bit closer to that one. This was taken not in a hundred year storm, uh, but on June thirty of this year. Uh, it was ten days after we all agreed to, uh, reevaluate, and engineers did look at everything. And you just see what forms in my side yard. The other one shows not only the side of the street, uh, in question, but the house that, uh, Mr. Kokomo developed and prepared for the drainage for, uh, very, much more recently. Uh, I don't remember exactly when that house went up, I had not moved into the neighborhood yet, but forty-seven, um. You've heard it's experienced some floods, but, uh, you'll see it in just a moment.
Sorry, technology's technology. We're getting it uploaded.
And the best things about it are the worst things about it.
Yes.
I just, uh, one question I had is, you know, Mr. Kokomo has presented a, a strong case, I think, that, um, the structure itself will help the flooding, and certainly the town engineer has, has backed that up, um, that the project is sound in that regard. Have you been observing that evidence? Do you, do you have any feeling that that might be the case, given your understanding of the neighborhood? That, I mean, do you feel, I think that, I think the, the general consensus among the neighborhood is that this is gonna be worse, it's gonna exacerbate the problem. But can you sort of explain to the commission why you feel that's the case?
I, I can, um, I'll just, if you wouldn't mind hitting play, this will be pretty demonstrative of my viewpoint in my neighborhood. That is the front yard of forty-seven. On June thirty, this is just two weeks ago. This is shot by, uh, my neighbor Dan Ottriselli there. He's now standing in his own driveway, this is the lot just downhill from the proposed building. About two inches of water there. And then he's not even in the street yet, as he takes a few more steps. See it, it's about six inches deep quite quickly. Water is moving very fast, and there on the left, just up that hill, is where the, uh, house is theoretically going to fit. Now, it seems a popular mantra, I am not an engineer, and I am not, but as to whether it will make it worse, we've just talked about, uh, two galleys underground taking, uh, half of the roof runoff for each of them. Uh, but the question is, then what happens? This is what happens, and to say that it might not be made worse, nothing about either of those videos shows a common sense view of where a house could realistically go, like this picture right here. If you can show me a perfect plan as to how to do it without adding another teaspoon, you haven't convinced me that that's an orderly development of our town, uh, our residential street, that whether it's the town's difficulty, uh, addressing its drainage, uh, whether two galleys under this, uh, yard are going to do a better job than whatever went under forty-seven by the same developers with the same engineers and the same heads up to address it. None of that is perfect, uh, scientific data, but it, I don't know how that could be developed in a good way.
Okay. Alright, thank you, June.
So, I think what, bear with me and you can tell me I'm wrong. So what I'm hearing is that with now a home on the property and a driveway on the property, that is now impervious. And so with this two, um, capture galleys, what are they called?
Galleys.
Uh, I, I think our engineer had said that once it reaches its capacity, it'll outflow back into the lawn and, um, become a part of the community, so you're saying that with that, then that would flow into the neighborhood and become worse? And I'm not wanting to put words in your mouth, but that's what I thought I heard you say.
That's what.
That certainly makes sense to me, but, uh, more importantly than what my non-engineer opinion might be, is with the amount of water you see coming in, why is a house a good idea? In, in what way does that better develop the community, the town, what have you?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir. Man up. Thank you.
For your time.
No, thank you, Mr., um, Mr. Wilbur.
Good evening, my name is John Racine, I live at thirty-one Club Drive. I'm down at the very bottom of the hill, and, um, I was last here in early June in the first hearing, and so I've got three points to make tonight, which you will have heard in other forums from other people. Since I was here in the first part of the public hearing, floodwaters have rotted out two more sets of roots on trees, two more trees have fallen since the first hearing. That's the downhill effect of this. Drive by my property and you'll see that whoever took the other one, I was out of town on vacation, took the other tree, cut it in half and put it on my property, something I have to deal with yet, but, um, it's only getting worse. I just spent eleven thousand dollars to lift and resurface my front yard. The good news is, is that it helped. It didn't flood like the videotape that you saw. That's eleven thousand dollars, I probably have to do it again in two to three years in order to try to slow the flooding that's coming in off the street. And I agree that it's a neighborhood problem and it's a community problem. I'd like to say that I, I absolutely understand and recognize the value of developers coming into communities, and I think that in areas that are blighted or underdeveloped, um, or badly in need of attention, they play a very essential role. Club Drive is not one of those neighborhoods, and I think that's a really important part. You will have in your packet a letter that was submitted today with photographs of my wife, Vera Racine, who in an earlier life in Carmel, California, one of the most restricted places in the world you'll ever go, was a property lawyer. Um, and whose mother still runs to this day one of the most successful architecture development firms there. And so, she doesn't come from the view that, you know, government should be so heavily handed, but certainly she understands what that looks like, and it works in some ways and not in others, but I, I think that she makes some good points. One of the most important points is that zoning commissions are created under state laws everywhere, in Connecticut and other places that we've lived, with a mandate not just to rubber stamp things. I'm not suggesting that you have or that you will, or with a mandate to, to view any development as a good development. But with one of the principles being to maintain the character of a community and a neighborhood, this house, whatever final form it takes, will absolutely not fit the character of the neighborhood. Forget the flooding problem, let's assume if the city comes in tomorrow and solves the problem, let's assume that next year I have to spend fifteen thousand dollars to, to resurface and lift another section of my yard, or I've gotta replace another six trees. It's unfortunate, I'm not blaming him. What he wants to do will only make it worse, and while he stood here and asserted that it would be zero impact, you've heard from the city's own engineer that there will be an overflow at some point. It will go into a manhole, which by the way, doesn't work today with the current overflows that, that happened in that neighborhood. But this house doesn't fit in this neighborhood. Not only is it in front of another home, and that homeowner's not here because he bought the house from this gentleman, and I'm sure had some reason to not show up and express an opinion one way or the other. You can read into that whatever you want to, but this house doesn't fit in this neighborhood, it doesn't fit the character of it. And I'm sure it'll be a nice house, and the city will make sure of that if it gets built. But it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood, and I think that you have a mandate and you have the flexibility and the option to make that decision, and I hope that you will. Because I'm sure this is not an easy job, and you're here late, and I'm sure you get paid a lot of money to be here late. Um, so I just hope that you'll consider that, that for those of you who've driven down that street, this is going to look like, um, one of those tiny houses that have been dropped on the corner of a piece of property. If, if I took the math of what he's doing, by the way, I have one point four or five acres, I could put two and maybe three other houses on my property. Did the math, I'd make about six hundred thousand dollars net in about eighteen months, probably not a bad outcome. I think you'd agree if you ever driven past my house, which is three stories tall, a lot of trees around it, we think it's lovely, we want to keep it that way. That it wouldn't be in the spirit of when that house was built in nineteen seventeen, we're in the spirit of that neighborhood. And it certainly wouldn't be something that I'm proud of, and I'd like to continue to live in a neighborhood where our kids can run and play in big yards. And, uh, you know, we'll deal with the flood issues at some point, but this proposed house and the subdivision doesn't fit in this neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Okay, alright, permission? Uh, June?
Um, for this fine neighbor who came and spoke today, I, I guess I would like to just, um, share that I have driven out to the neighborhood and have, you know, envisioned what, what a house would do on that property. And it, it's old front by the road that comes in front of it, and all the other homes are, in that neighborhood are set way back. They have large, lush, um, um, lawn and bushes and trees, they have lots of space and, um, showcasing their home, and, and I I do kind of agree with what he said, that there's room for other houses on these properties, but this is the feel of the neighborhood is not to take up all that space.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alright. Okay, so, I know, yes. Yes, Maureen?
As, as I was listening, um, I'm wondering, I, Mike is still on, um, and we're wondering if I can ask a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
And he may not have looked into this, but if he has, and what his opinion may be, if the issue in the road is the road itself, or if it's caused by the grading on each lawn going into the road? And how, where are the problems coming from? That are the issue at the road, and whether that is something that the town can necessarily address if it's runoff.
Okay. Mr. Hearn, did you have a chance to hear the question?
I did, yeah, um, I know I did not do a comprehensive drainage analysis of the entire area, but I did look at the topo, and as many of the residents have, uh, indicated, it's basically an ice, like it's a localized low area. And right now, there's no drainage going out to relieve that. And I did hear anecdotally that maybe back in the day, way before my time, um, there might have been an attempt to do that, but it would require an easement through private property. I don't know if an easement was granted or even was, even was sought, but I heard just anecdotally from staff that maybe that had been tried in the past, and, uh, the easement was not obtained, so. But in general, there are things you can do, they're not, um, ultimate solutions unless you can daylight a pipe to some receiving water body, but there are drain, there are dry wells you can put in, which will at least allow the water to get off the road a little quicker after the storm. But during a storm, a localized low spot like that, that's sort of a captive area, is, is gonna flood. It, it just will, it already is now, so, um, that's, so I did not look at, uh, the surrounding grading in the lots and the properties that are around that, that would require, uh, you know, quite a bit of effort, and I didn't even know it was required, so, um, no, I did not.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Anything else? Okay. Alright, so, what's the feel for the commission?
Can I just clarify that? I just want, you know, we're very closely with Mike and we work together and
Go right ahead.
I wanted him to make sure he realized it would not have necessarily been something that would have been expected, but with the testimony we're getting, it answers the question, so I wanted to, so that everyone had it add.
We appreciate it.
Some familiarity.
Okay, what's the flavor of the commission? We're still in public hearing, but do you have any other questions? I know it's getting late, so I'm trying to keep you with me, marching forward. Anyone online? Has a question? Thank you. No, no one online?
If you're online and you wish to speak, unmute yourself, and start talking.
Okay.
This for zero Club Drive slash forty-four Randdecker's subdivision application.
Oh, I guess we have no.
So many on there, I want.
I know, there's, yeah, there's a lot, yeah.
And or anyone else, so thank you for indulging me.
Alright, no problem. I'll make a motion to close the public hearings. Alright, we have a motion to close by Ms. Jursi the second came from Mr. Hamel. Further discussion on this, so all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so moved. Okay, great, so this public hearing is closed. And we'll circle back to it later, um, let me see, we have the application for Nicholas Maurizio and Collier's International Prepared by Attorney Sullivan. Okay, I think that this has been, um, this is going to be delayed because of a stipulation.
Yeah, so that the, um, uh, court hearing that's required under the general statutes, um, when we settle a matter, and, and this is a stipulated judgment, so it would have a hearing anyway. Um, but it was moved, um, to August first, the court did have a question with regard to the stipulation, so we had a status conference. We addressed, uh, Judge O'Hanlon's question, and I did, uh, publish a new notice in the newspaper, I published on the fifteenth on Monday. Um, so that hearing is at ten AM on August first, for anybody who's interested. Um, there is a notice that did publish in the Herald again on the fifteenth. Um, and, uh, members of the public can, uh, participate and observe if they, if they would like to, so, um, if you want to do that, uh, call the court clerk. Uh, but you could certainly call planning and zoning too and get those details. Thank you.
Okay.
So this should just be continued, and I would expect, I know you have an August first meeting. I expect that I'll be able to report to you that evening, um, that the court did grant the motion. But you do need to leave this open, continue it.
Alright, so, motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to August first.
Okay, Ms. Jursi has a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken, okay, further discussion, all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so. Thank you. Uh, under deliberation. Thank you. Uh, under deliberations, we have the subdivision application for Kokomo LLC for this two lots at the forty-four Rand Decker's road. Okay. Now's our turn. All right, commissioners, how are we feeling about this? What are our concerns, actions? Well. Let's not all speak at once.
Yeah. I, um, I guess I'll start.
Ms. Josie, go right ahead.
This application I think is really difficult because I don't think that, um, what's proposed is necessarily a good fit for the neighborhood. But I find myself, um, compelled to accept, um, the town engineer's expertise with respect to the drainage issues. And feel that, um, as, as a commissioner, we need to rely on staff for the, um, expertise that they have to offer us. So I, I feel that this is really, um, a tough one, but, um, it's compliant with our regulations. And with that, I, I can't see a reason to, um, deny it.
Is that a motion?
I, I'm happy to make a motion. I didn't know if maybe there would be more discussion.
Anyone else? It's just exploding.
No, I'm sorry. No, I, I, I think, um, Diane has mentioned some very valuable things. I think you're right. Relying on our engineer. Put confidence in him and what he has provided. I agree with. As I've clearly mentioned in the meetings today and in the past, my biggest concern is for the safety of a family that would dwell in there. I know that studies are different here and there. And I know that these lines go through yards. But I, I don't know how many I've seen go right along the line of the right of way. And it clearly stated in the document that the applicant provided that, um, the exposure is much higher on the line and as you get away to one hundred feet, two hundred feet, that greatly diminishes. And having it right along the home as he's drawn on the, um, drawing, um, that would be a constant exposure. In his document, he stated, or it shows where leukemia is a concern. Documents that I provided. Um, and these are articles, I understand. Also say that seniors or, um, people with serious cancer or other treatments are at greater risk under that constant exposure. Now, as a commissioner or, or a commission, I feel we must try to always look at safeties and concerns of our, our residents. And I guess that's, that's just one of my biggest concerns at this application.
Just one thing to add that I could actually add to this.
So just for the, just for clarity, the, um, while all members and alternates can participate while the hearing's open. Once you go into deliberations, it's only those that are seated that should be, um, adding to the discussion.
You know, I had the one question for, um, individual from the neighborhood, and I, I think he shares the same concerns as everyone else. Really the line, my line of question had more to do with to try to parse out exactly the motivations, the understandable motivations of the neighborhood. And, and it's, this house is not a good fit, but Commissioner Dorsey, you know, Josie's correct in that in, in reality, that's not a sufficient reason to deny the application. I was trying more to ferret out any legitimate concerns. Again, understand the frustration totally. I'm, I wouldn't want a house to be dropped in my backyard any more than anyone else. But the issue becomes, is there any legitimate concern from the neighborhood about the flooding? And I haven't heard any unfortunately. And I think our town engineer has, has laid out, or the engineer has laid out the case and Mr. Kokomo has laid out the case and it's the only evidence we have to consider. Um, and we really can't consider anything outside the record and, and we have to be logical about this. And, um, I, I agree that this is, um, a tough one. But unfortunately, the, this commission has to make tough decisions. So at the very least, however this comes out, I, I hope the neighborhood understands. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well. I just, anyone else? Right?
Yes, uh, I, I just, uh, confirm, uh, my partner over here, uh, about the electrical waves. Uh, it's been a concern of mine for years. One of the studies that she brought in here for record here. I was involved with the state with that study. And it's always been, uh, you know, no more than a white microwave or whatever, a phone. Yeah, that's, that's not underneath it. That's as you get further distance away. But we have the same thing. With the next application coming in and in a couple of seconds here for deliberations. It's the same item. But it is my feeling that the, those waves do cause problems. And I don't know because of the studies, uh, that we could do anything about it, to tell you the truth. The studies say a little bit different. You know, but, uh, you're right. The, the, the house placement, the extra work for, uh, the leaders and everything else, uh, the developers trying to do what he's got to do on that lot uh, to develop it. And that's all I can say is that I don't see our part denying it. You know, I mean, uh, I would love to, but I don't see our part to deny it. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Josie?
Yeah, just, um, a question maybe for counsel. Other applications that we've, um, had in the past, we've had, um, uh, notations on the deeds or, um, like a stipulation. So that the, the people moving in have an understanding or acknowledgement of, um, the risk or concern that, um, we have here with respect to the, um, electric electromagnetic waves. Is that something that, um, we can uh, put as a condition on approval?
I think, uh, Commissioner Josie, I would need to, what are, what are you thinking in terms of that? I mean, you know, they're apparent. Their presence, it's not, it's not hidden. So, um, in terms of the transmission lines, I mean, they're, you know, they're visible. And
I agree. I think, uh, I don't think that the fact sheets that we have are necessarily conclusive. And, uh,
And, and there, and I mean, if there is case law on this, I mean, obviously, uh, that, you know, citing council's been sued by community groups, um, over the, the utility poles and so forth. And, you know, I think it's recognized in the law that, that if somebody does suffer a specific harm and that's able to be proved, that could be pursued. So, you know, if, if the exposure radiation does cause somebody harm or there's some harm to property, you know, they, they do have the ability and, and there have been claims that have survived, you know, summary judgment motions and, and that sort of thing. I, I haven't looked at the issue in a long time, so I don't know in terms of recovery, has anyone ever recovered? I can't speak to that, uh, cause it's been some time, but, um, you know, there, there is a means in the law to pursue claims. You know, with, so just because, um, you know, the utility gets approval through, uh, the authority that that signs off on obviously the location of the lines and so on, doesn't mean that if a, a property owner is impacted, that they can't bring a claim. Um, so.
Well, and there clearly is precedence with respect to development within these zones. It, it's not like this would be the first property that had a house constructed under a power line.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there any way a restriction of use of that land underneath the power line or in that fifty foot area? I know that the, the power company says you can't build anything in there. They can't be removed. And for they can construct their, whatever they got to go there in. But, uh, I mean, if you plant a garden in there and, and all the vegetables are getting hit by this.
I don't believe that's allowed by the utilities, no, that someone would even be able to do that.
Well, that, yeah. So I'm, I'm, you know, I was wondering before, I brought it up a couple of minutes ago. Some kind of non-use is a thing, uh, you know, in the and it, I don't know how would that would be worded, uh.
Because, because you're thinking that, um, an unknowledgeable purchaser about that issue, um, might attempt to construct something, whether it's for recreational purposes or a shed or whatever.
Yeah.
Underneath the, the wires.
Right. I mean, garden, shed, whatever, you know? Uh, that they're using all the time. I mean, the one, the one that I, uh, know about, when I said I did help this study with the state, uh, years ago, was a swimming pool. Okay. That was right on the line. Okay. So right on the line, everyone swimming in a swimming pool was getting that high number, you know? And that became a issue through the homeland owner and, 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 uh, the electric company and stuff like that. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to get say that
I think that would be.
Developer can't use the land. I'm trying to say, how, how can we, you know, maybe quote this, uh, the paperwork? And, and on the land.
I think it would be stated in the easement that the utility has.
Absolutely. It would absolutely be.
Or make, make that easement agreement part of the.
Impact their accessibility to their facilities. So it would be in the easement language.
Yeah.
Long time.
Yeah. I, you know, I don't know what.
I looked at one of those.
If that easement that's I'm sure addresses it with the electric company. Uh, and the easement, what you can do and what you can't do and all that other stuff. If that easement just can be quoted in the, on the deed. Or maybe that's sufficient. I don't know. You know, uh, just.
To call their attention.
Called it, some called their attention.
That it is in their chain of title, the easement.
There, yeah, there, there's a fifty foot.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a innocuous, uh, condition of approval. I think that that's, that's okay. If, if that's something that you would like to impose, I don't, I wouldn't think that that would be objectionable.
And I, I appreciate that thought and that's good. And I was, I had highlighted in the minutes that Mr. Kokomo had replied, I'm reading. He's familiar with power lines and referred to buyer beware, but he stated he's willing to stipulate to them in the deed. So it sounds like he's agreeable to having that stated somewhere that is agreeable with our attorney.
The property itself is, is eclipsed by the easement, this easement. So it would, this, the deed would refer to the easement. It would, you would never be able to hide.
It should anyway. It should, John, it should. But we know that sometimes property descriptions, they get copied and they lose things like references to easements for some reason. Boy, have I seen a lot of those in the last ten years. And then I've got to go sometimes fix things, right?
Well, then do what Timmy wants. Put it in there.
Just really quick, I'm also having a hard time with this development. And but I'm going to fall on a different side of the fence. I understand Michael Hearn is the engineer and I understand the process which he was explaining, this would all work. But I can't understand how I can let a bad situation get worse. And I truly feel that the development of this property would worsen the situation that the neighbors are now suffering or languishing under. I do have respect for the neighbors that, you know, everyone has a neighborhood. They're all keeping their properties well. And I think that with our zoning regulations and our planning regi- regulations, they do allow us to look to see that we don't harm a neighborhood. That we do what's best for the existing neighborhood. We take in their quality of life as well. I guess the old adage is just because you're allowed to put a dynamite factory, doesn't mean that you could build one next to a nunnery. I mean, sometimes you actually have to look to see what's the flavor and, and even if, if it's a permitted use. Is it, is it the right use? I understand what my fellow commissioners are saying and I, the applicant and the engineer, I hear it all. But for the life of me, I I'm struggling hard with this. And I just don't think that we're going to be adding to the neighborhood. I think we're going to be detracting from the neighborhood. So that's just the way I feel. Anyway. The hour is getting late. So.
Have we ever?
Anyone made a?
Uh, you, Commissioner Long, have we ever voted against something because it doesn't attract to the neighborhood or?
So you do, no, I think we take have.
You have that question.
When I, I read you the policies, this is a couple of meetings. I think, I think there's something about it in the policy.
Sorry.
So in twenty, twenty oh three, um, yeah, twenty, uh, zero, three, two, land, uh, this is your policies and your, and your subdivision regulations. Land to be subdivided shall be of such character that it can be used safely for building purposes without danger to health or peril from fire, flood or other menace. And then, um, twenty, zero, three, three. Proper provision shall be made for vehicular, pedestrian traffic, drainage, water storage and other needed improvements. Remember I've read from the policies and then I, and then I went further and I read, uh, your improvement section that talked about, about drainage as well. And it, you know, just kind of piggybacking on what everybody has said. I mean, you, you, you know, you've got to consider the two, I think, together because, um, you know, there are specific provisions with regard to drainage improvements. And, you know, of course there's reference to the design standards and the construction specs and, and standards. But, um, you know, it, it, for example, the last sentence, for example, of fifty-two, zero, twenty says, "Commission may require the installation of a stormwater management system, which could include both detention and retention systems, which will restrict discharges of stormwater from the subdivision to no more than the flow's existing prior to development." Right? So you've got language there that allows you to control the system. Right? That's being proposed, um, as, as part of your process. So, you know, there there's language there. You know, uh, fifty-two, oh, two, one, "A street storm sewer drainage system shall be installed and extended to nearest town, uh, storm sewer, um, or to the nearest natural drainage all at all in accordance with these and any other town regulations and as approved by the town engineer." You know, that's, um, so you know, you, you do have that character element in your policy. And, but then you have, you know, the ability to look at what's being proposed. And, and consider whether or not what's being proposed for drainage is sufficient.
But even by Mr. Hearn's own, on account, he said that this is a localized low area and it's always going to flood. And so I guess going back to my point or my feeling is if it's always going to flood, why am I going to add to the to the flooding? I mean, he's designing a system that technically should work. And I don't doubt that it won't work, but I don't think it'll work enough to help this property. That, that's what my fear is and I just think it's going to, it's going to implode on the street and it's going to make it worse than it is. That's how I'm seeing it.
And and, you know, that's, again, you're one of the decision makers. I mean, that's, it is up to you whether or not you're satisfied that what you've heard is sufficient.
Yeah.
From an evidentiary standpoint, you know, you you make that determination.
Yeah, I'll live with it. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision as proposed. And with the notation on the deed as discussed to call to the attention that there is an existing easement.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Do we have further discussion? Then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Three of you.
So I think we need, we need to do a roll call if you bear with us for one second.
Deluge me, I need a roll.
Yeah, okay.
You did, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't want to make a call.
So those in favor.
I'm opposed to the proposal.
Diane Jorsy?
In favor.
Kim Ziegma? Ryan Rogan?
In favor.
Monveely?
Opposed.
Scott Hamel?
Opposed.
John Dyken?
In favor.
Four, three.
Four, three, but.
Okay, motion passes. No problem. Thank you. And thank you to the public for coming out, staying with us. And we really appreciate all your efforts. You'd be able to contact the town engineer or the planning department, Ms. Juicy? Yes, of course. Of course. Thank you and good night. Okay, we have some items left on the agenda. Did delivery, okay, so. Okay. Mr. Kokomo, do the right thing. I don't want to hear from these neighbors. No, honestly, you were.
No.
No, okay, well, good. Yeah. Okay, good night. Thank you. All right, and so we already had the other stuff all continued, so now we're going to move on to the planners' comments if you have anything.
Really, really, really quick.
Yes, and then I have something very important to do.
Something important, a couple of important things. Just in case you're not all aware, the town did pass a noise ordinance last week, which changes some things about industrial properties and some other things. And we're, we're going to hopefully put together kind of a summary. And I don't think it ended up distributed to you in your packet. That was my intent, but I think with other things I got way late and that didn't get included. So in an upcoming package that will be distributed, but it's, I'm sure, posted already online. But it's an updated noise ordinance. The noise ordinance we had only dealt with construction noise. It's been expanded.
Okay, all right.
And the other thing is, I'm sure, I I'm confident that most of you had heard that the Pickle Festival was had some issue. It was very successful for the for the participants. But that, so I wanted you to be aware that we are having an interdepartmental meeting next week to identify how to handle the situations and mitigate similar future problems that might happen. You know, as stated, it was the
Approved it and, you know, every time there's there's something going down, the noise ordinance, the pickle fest, the planning commission gets into it.
Well, it's easier to throw us under the bus.
Well, I will say, in one particular letter that was distributed as antedoteally, I did raise my hand to, you know, with the town manager go, that was our department and the commission, just because it said what department in town had allowed this. So where we are working to get the best information and we're going to be working on making sure you know, that we get good information and updated information when they become successful. I think that is one of the big issue, you know, they, their initial anticipation to this commission was fifteen hundred participants a day. They, as I understand it, it was closer to twenty five thousand for the two days, so that's twelve thousand a day. And and more vendors than they anticipated. Well, that's a number they know. They might not know how many people arrive at the gate, you know, show up last minute at a gate. But they will know if, an organizer would know if they have contracted with more vendors and more food trucks and more, you know, otherwise participants. So or sold, pre-sold more tickets and that's something that we need to get them to come back to the town. So you do, the the, they were the same organizers, as I understand it, are doing the Made in Connecticut event, which was held last year. And we did not have any reports back to the commission that there was an issue, so they remained on the 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 fair list, you know, the fair property list for this year, which is an administrative approve, you know, they've been on the list and they're on the list, they can stay on the list. So however, that with the, as I understand it, the same organizers, any of the events, I'm sure we'll be discussing a lot of issues next week, everything from traffic parking and utilizing Sage Park for overflow and shuttles to security, safety, ambulances on site, you know, we'll, we'll be discussing all of that. And I just wanted to make this commission or, you know, give you the confidence of the town.
The fire department.
Boys are, they're coming to the meeting as well.
You know, I mean, it's just the fire department, the police department, they all got overwhelmed. You know, and we have to put conditions into these events, I guess, saying that there's a flaw thing that the traffic is too much, you must do this, the Berlin Fair traffic pattern, pattern or whatever. You know, because it's been established and worked, you know?
Yeah, and these are all things that are orchestrated through the departments when we have information.
Automatically.
We'll be working on it with and with the chief, with the traffic officer, I mean, we're all the, they, we think we're going to need maybe to come up to this room for the meeting, given the number of town participants. So it's, it was going to be in the conference room. I'm not sure we'll fit.
That's, that's the end of your comments, sir?
That's the end of my case. I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
More, just, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go.
One question about, I I caught a little bit of the town council meeting before the Pickle Festival and the plan was to have one police officer there. Is that what happened?
No.
That was the
The exact logistics that happened, I, I was not
But this was days before, that they had one.
Yes, but they called in.
Okay.
They called in a lot of police, but they they couldn't set up the pattern. They couldn't set up the pattern, the buses were going the wrong way, dropping people off on the wrong side of the street. I walk, walking between the traffic and everything else, it was just ridiculous.
They called in, the personnel called in and
That noise ordinance, should that be in our zoning regs?
So there was a lot of discussion about the, with with council, with with the, yeah, with with our corporation council, Tony Dof, Donofio is the, you know, the primary for the ordinance committee and the town manager and worked closely with our department as well as the police department. It's, and as it's currently the case, it it lays with the, with where the authority can be and it has the personnel, the and the timing, when's noise, noise is frequently
Because we got named, we got named in that too.
Okay, all right, okay. I just want to read something very, I just want to read something very quick before we go. And as you know, Andra Millard's mother-in-law passed away, she's commissioner with us and she does a lot of good stuff for this commission. And she did give me this card today so that I would share it with the commission. And it says, Dear friends, George and I would like to thank all of you for the beautiful planter we received. We appreciate your thoughts and prayers and your friendship during this most difficult time. Andra and George. So the commission did forward, so none of you are side blinded, we sent them some flowers. Scott Hamel was kind enough to put it all together for us on behalf of the commission and the staff. So that, this is what she was referring to. So if she says anything to you, you'll know, okay? All right, I'll see you tomorrow. Right, no, I do, I do. So if if you want to contribute, you can, but I mean, I, at this point, I'll work it out with Scott. I know, he wants to go home. All right, but that's it, okay. That being said and done, all right, just, she asked me to read it and I told her I would. Thank you, I'll see you tomorrow. Okay, so now what are we doing? We're going into executive session and hopefully this won't be a long executive session. I'm missing Trump's speech, so. Anyway, do we have a motion for executive session? Nobody's, okay. I know, but I haven't even gotten a motion yet. These guys don't want to go. You'll do it? Steve Pyle is going to make the motion for executive session, go into executive session.
All right.
You are ready.
A discussion of pending litigations for nineteen oh six. Yeah, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Now she's going to do it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the status of pending litigation of nineteen oh six Berlin LLC and Berlin versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission and possible action relating to same. Item B, consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of pending litigation of nineteen oh six Berlin LLC versus the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Berlin. Item C, discuss the status of pending litigation of five fifty five fifty four Berlin Turnpike Associates versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission and Town of Berlin and possible action relating to same. And item D, to consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of pending litigation of five fifty five fifty four Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission and Town of Berlin. And that we include in this meeting our counsel, Jennifer Capola, staff, Maureen Juicy and Ashley Castellani and Mr.
This is Alexa Gorlick.
I'm sorry, Alexa. Did I get the right last name?
No, Gorlick.
Oh, Gorlick, I'm so sorry. And Mr. Snow. And that the regular meeting will conclude at the end of the executive session.
Okay, all right, second by Mr. Hamel for the discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Did I lose somebody? Brian Rogan.
We are going to call, Brian, we're going to call you.
All right, sound good.
All right.
Brian, call me.